Vice Mayor, Commissioners, right now we have a request if there could be a delay in the starting of the meeting. And wanted to know if you would grant that request from the mayor.
Okay, when does the mayor want to start or what?
So, the mayor has requested if we could start the meeting at 2:30 PM.
Okay.
I'm not in favor of that.
Okay.
Nor am I. I think the public's here. We need to move forward in all respect to the mayor and we have a vice mayor here. We have three people. We did it last time. Let's keep moving and if that's the consensus of the three of us.
Okay.
All right, Vice Mayor, so if that's the case, wanted to ask if we could certainly, I would propose if the presentations can start. We can certainly do that.
Yeah, I think there's, I think desire to move forward and, yeah, absolutely. So I think let's, let's move forward and if there's, were there certain, are there any certain topics or items Mr. City Manager, the mayor wanted to specifically be part of the discussion for? Maybe we could put those later if that's...
So...
Vice Mayor, could we have perhaps some delay in starting?
In terms...
Maybe less than, less than a full hour. Well, actually two o'clock, something less than a full hour.
In your reasoning?
The same as what the city manager said.
So, I'm with you. What's the issue that he wants to be here for?
No, we could certainly, as the Vice Mayor, if it's your pleasure, we can begin with the neighbor presentations.
By the time I finish his presentation...
Yeah, I think let's get going. We've got conference, we've got a bunch of stuff I think we can cover and, yeah, I mean...
If there's something he misses, we can bring it back up.
Bring it back up when he comes back.
Give him all the time he needs.
Yep, okay. So let's, let's start off with communications to the City Commission, City Manager, if that's all right, please start.
Yeah, sure. So, there's a communication to the City Commission that you received from the budget, the Board of Adjustments. And the request is for the city to take a look at the height and zoning requirements in the annexed areas to more accurately reflect current building construction techniques. And for that, we have Mr. Chris Cooper to elaborate further.
Good afternoon. Chris Cooper, Director of Development Services. So, this was in response to a request for the Board of Adjustment to entertain an appeal on the height requirements for the annexed area. And as the city manager said, the Board asked us to come back and take a look at that in general and didn't really make a decision on that appeal. It's a pretty big effort to do this because of the annexed area. We need to get consensus and approval from the community in that area to move forward with any changes to the zoning code. So, what you'd essentially be asking us to do is to reach out to that community to determine if there's any interest in moving forward with any change to that, to the ULDR for that area.
Okay, and would that be outreach to the community, you know, associations and neighbors there? Would that be the first step?
It's the community at large. We could start with the associations and go from there, but we need consensus for them to move forward with any change.
Now, which, which community is this?
Go ahead.
Yeah, good. Which community is this?
I'm sorry?
Which community are we talking about?
So, they just said the annexed area. So is everything covered in the ULDR? That's the annexed area that was annexed from Broward County where the zoning code was essentially stopped in time at the point of annexation.
So, are we talking about annexing incorporated? Are we talking about, what are we talking about?
This is the area that's already annexed. So it's the Riverland Road, Melrose area, the already annexed portion of the city.
And what is the caution here that we're trying to avoid or, or get in front of? What is the sudden cry?
So, the appeal was to address a building height requirement in that area. So, since the time of the annexation, the requirements for building height, both in the city and the county have changed. And so, the request to the Board of Adjustment was to make a determination that the, that that was the building height requirement to follow and not necessarily what the annex, section of the code for the annexed area states.
But if, so they want to go higher or they want to just go lower? Are they, are they questioning those, those, those new units that are being put up on, on Davey?
It wasn't necessarily to, to change it in any, any specific way. It was to make it consistent with what the city already has for, how the city measures height and how the county measures height.
I concur. I just want to make sure it was nothing different from what I understood.
I think, I mean, Chris, from my perspective, Commissioner Glassman gave your feedback, but I think it makes sense to reach out to the community, start getting some feedback and discussion and kind of come back to the commission. Is that Commissioner Glassman with your...
And that letter was from whom?
Yep, okay.
From the community, right?
From the community.
Right.
Okay.
Yep, from the community. Greg, is that fair next step?
We can certainly follow up on that, yes.
All right. Thanks, Chris. Appreciate it. Great. Next up, neighborhood presentation. So, just for the community at large, we have the opportunity, anyone in the city, to present to us during the day at a community meeting like, commission meeting like this, or in the evening. So we have some folks that are presenting today. First up is Dennis Olmer. Dennis, come on up. Dennis is going to be speaking about honoring our veterans. Yeah, would you set the timer? I can do it as well. Yep. God, thank you. Go ahead, Dennis.
Good afternoon, Vice Mayor, Commissioners. I'm Dennis Olmer, and I ask to speak to you this afternoon about Veterans Day. November 11th is Veterans Day. This holiday started as a day to reflect upon the heroism of those who died in our country's service and was originally called Armatus Day. It fell on November 11th because that is the anniversary of the signing of the armatus that ended World War I. However, in 1954, the holiday was changed to Veterans Day in order to account for all veterans of all wars. Honoring veterans today, we must remember those who suffered horrendous lifelong injuries. There are veterans who suffer from homelessness, alcohol or drug abuse, post-traumatic stress disorder, depression, and veteran suicide rates are alarmingly high. These are the concerns that we should have as we honor our veterans for their service. Last year, after our nation's withdrawal from Afghanistan, many veterans were questioning their service to our nation. No veteran should ever think their service has gone unnoticed or is forgotten. Since the founding of our nation in 1776, brave Americans have fought and died to protect the freedom our nation holds dear. Freedom isn't free, and those who served to protect us are forever our American heroes. Veterans, please don't forget that. You are our heroes today, tomorrow, and forever. We will never forget you and your service to our nation. The way we should thank a veteran for their service is to show that while they may no longer be in their military service uniform, while we honor their service, we will also provide a lifetime of services and care for all they need to return to civilian life. On Veterans Day, Friday, November 11th, at 11:00 AM, there will be a ceremony to honor our veterans at the Sandy and Inger statue on Riverwalk. There is complete information on the ceremony on the city's website. I hope that you will attend. In closing, with the Vice Mayor's permission, I ask those serving in our services or those who have served to please stand so that we can honor and recognize your service.
Any veterans in the house, please stand. Thank you for serving.
May God bless our veterans and their families, and may God bless the United States of America. Thank you.
Dennis, Dennis, thank you. Thank you for doing this every year. I've watched you every year do this, and it's such an important reminder, and thank you for your words.
Yeah, thank you, Dennis, and thank you to all who have served, and we have many members of the city staff that are still serving today. So, through the deserves and National Guard. So Greg, I appreciate your continuing to lift and support those folks that are serving. Fantastic. Next up, Roderick Newkirk. Roderick, are you here? Fantastic. If you'd come up to the podium, Roderick. Thank you. Fantastic. Roderick is going to be talking about affordable housing resources, which is something near and dear to this commission's heart. If you just share who you're, who you're with, Roderick. Thank you.
Oh, myself.
Great, thank you.
Hi, how are you?
Excellent.
Okay, I'm following up on the, I spoke on the third, so I'm following up on that meeting. You know, this has been an issue that I've been dealing with for like the last...
Speak into that microphone, please.
Okay. This is an issue that I've been dealing with for like the last eight and a half years, but you know, I've seen, first it started off very rocky, but I can't say I'm proud of the county and also the city of, you know, taking the leadership on this because I do see a lot of progress. Right now, since I got out of the shelter, since I got out of the Broward Partnership Shelter in 2001, I, you guys got all the emails that I sent you out. So, I'm on rapid rehousing right now. I was, I'm working with the, I'm working with the Mr. Bostic down at Human Services. You know, he, they helped me out really good down there. So I'm on two years rapid rehousing right now. The thing is, I'm in my second year. What happened was, when I was at the shelter, Ms. Sharica, she applied for me for the emergency housing voucher. So she applied for me for that. And my case manager now, Ms. Gonzalez, she's working with me right now. So what ended up happening was, it looked like I was skipped because I was considered a single male. But you know, I've always had my children and everything with me. So right now, I'm in the one bedroom affordable housing apartment, but of course, you know, you know, I definitely need that bigger. So, I'm working on those projects right now, but what I need from the city is, I understand that you guys have development that's going on all around the city, and I grew up in the city all my life, and I would like to continue to stay downtown for Fort Lauderdale. You have developments around the city, around this area here. What I need is, I need the contact information so that I can put my name on any waiting list or any future waiting list. And plus also, do you have any vouchers available with the Fort Lauderdale Housing Authority? And also, you know, like for any subsidized housing, any waiting list. And also too, I know that with the, all the luxury apartments that's being built, I know that you still have to have some affordable housing in there. So, with the luxury apartment units, what, what buildings have affordable housing where I can pay like, you know, 10 to 15 to 30% of my income? Because I am low income, but I'm back at Publix. I've been back at Publix five years now. I'm, you know, working my way back up. As you see when you look into my other email, when I lost the Publix job the first time and when I lost the job at Tire Kingdoms. So, that was in the 2014 when I lost everything I had. So, you know, and I, you know, just kept at it, kept at it, and you know, here I am, you know, right now today, you know, still keeping at it.
Yeah.
So I need all the listing of that from you guys so that I can, you know, hurry up and get my name put on the waiting list. I understand it's hard dealing with the vouchers with the federal government because our rapid rehousing goes only to two years, but the federal government has extended it to three years. The federal government extended it to three years. So, you know, I'm still working through that process, but I just, I need this help from the city of Fort Lauderdale right now so that I can get out and I'll put my name on any other waiting lists that's out and whatever else that you have to offer and that.
Yeah, Roderick. So, thank you. Thank you for your continued perseverance and for taking care of your family. So we've got a bunch of resources and as you mentioned, continue to partner with developers and with the city's housing trust to build affordable housing development. So, Greg, who could we best partner?
I believe that, I believe, Roderick, have you been in contact with our neighbor support people? Because we've been reading your emails and sending them to neighbor support, and they're assuring us that they're working with you on all of this.
I spoke with a young lady. She was, she was, she was supposed to get back with me with a list, but, because I'm, you know, I'm, I'm looking at all the developments and then, so that's the information that I need so that I can, you know, get with them. And then I'll put my name on any other waiting lists that you have coming up. And also too, any of the units, because any other units in the luxury apartments, whatever affordable housing units that they have in there, also too, you know, put my name on the waiting list for one of those. Because my lease is going to be up, my lease is going to be up next year with the building where I'm at now.
So, Greg, I think connecting with Anthony, is that going to be the best resource?
Actually, Chris Cooper.
Chris Cooper, yep.
Chris Cooper has, has some information for you as well, and definitely can assist you in guiding you to make sure that we get those, your, your name on the vouchers and the voucher waiting list.
Right, right, please, please.
Yeah, we'll get, there's a bunch of different lists you can be on, including, and Chris, I'm happy to partner with Chris on this too, is at Broward Partnership for the Homeless, for example, they're building new amazing affordable housing units there. There's going to be...
I have my name on that waiting list too.
On that list, so a bunch of resources. So, Chris, is that fair? You're going to partner up with Roderick and then we'll keep us updated, Roderick.
Oh, yeah, definitely will.
Does that sound good?
Greg, I think, I think Luis is working on this already, just so you know.
Yeah, yeah, we're certainly going to circle back. And I want to take a moment also to just let the public know that we have a shortage of landlords that can make affordable housing options available. And certainly that can amplify the volume available. And the Housing Authority also is in need for additional people to participate in that program as well, from the landlord side.
I was going to speak to you. I know we've interacted through your emails and some of the services we've already provided by your own admission here today. I know, I know we say there's a bunch of resources, but you'll find many, many people in the same predicament with all these resources that we supposedly have. But, and even in the mentioning of what the city manager and yourself said about vouchers. Vouchers do not come from the city of Fort Lauderdale. They come from the Housing Authority, whether it's Broward County, Fort Lauderdale, Pompano, and it goes on and on based on other cities. And that list, as I know it, is a two-year waiting list, and I think now you're finishing up our rapid rehousing program, and in a couple of months, that's up and you're looking for those units that we talk about in our commission meetings that a developer supposedly, you know, chose to build several of them.
Right, right, right.
Or be paid into a pot. Most of these luxury apartments, as you alluded to, don't have what you're looking for. There's no pie in the sky.
Well, they suppose...
There is a shortage in affordable housing. So, you'll get a listing, but most of these developments, and correct me on the numbers, probably 90% of them don't have affordable units. And the ones that do... And the ones that do, and it's three in Flagler Village that I know of right off the top of my head, Andrews and Sistrunk, they are full to capacity. And they are low-income projects. But we have to do a deeper dive if we're going to be serious. And I've heard this commission speak to it. But what I don't want to see us do, I'm leaving in the future, is depend on developers to figure this out. And we had a meeting yesterday with the city manager, and I expressed my concerns. So when we do have these parcels that we're offering off to P3s here lately, these parcels owned by the cities could be good opportunities for us to do some low and affordable income housing. And it doesn't matter what side of the tracks these parcels lie on because there are thousands more of Rodney's in the city. And they don't all look like him. It's more economic than it is culture. And things just don't cost what they used to cost. There's a crisis. And I encourage you, as I leave, that we do not do any more pots of money to opt out. We figure out how do we build units to help out.
Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you, Rodrick. Appreciate it. Keep us updated. And Chris is right there.
Okay.
We'll keep working, all right?
Okay.
But good luck.
Thank you, good luck.
And stay persistent. I mean, your key, your success in 2001 is you lost your job, you got back in the game. You keep calling us, you had an accident too. I think something happened too, if I'm not mistaken.
I lost a job, I lost the two jobs I had in 2014. And then that's, and then at that point, I lost everything I had because this here, this here has been like an eight and a half year process-
Right.
-that I was going through. So what happened was, I lost the place, I lost the place to stay in 2001 because I qualified for the rental assistance, but the apartment complex, for some reason or another, did not want to accept the rental assistance. That's how I went to the shelter. So I went to the shelter then. From that, I spoke with the Broward County Commission. Once I spoke with the Broward County Commission, they got me in contact with Mr. Bostick, and that's how I got on the two-years rapid rehousing.
Right. But be persistent is what I'm saying.
Oh, definitely, definitely.
And our staff is going to be very accommodating. You're in good hands with Mr. Chris. But be persistent and just keep us aware of what's going on and where you are. Please, sir.
Definitely.
Thank you, Rodrick. Appreciate it. Thanks for being here. All right, our next neighborhood presentation is Warren Pender. Warren, come on up. Thank you for being here. Warren's going to be talking about street name change in honor of Coach Marcia Pender.
Best there ever was.
Amazing.
Both male and female. And-
Good afternoon.
Speak into the microphone.
Good afternoon. My name's Warren Pender. My wife, Marcia Pender, was the head basketball coach at Dillard High School since 1976. She passed away in '21. She was the winningest coach in Florida, 10 state championships, about 15 district championship, regional championships. But the most important thing to her was the development of the girls, that they moved on. Not necessarily go to college, but they were great people as they came out. Right now, we're having a year with an assistant coach who was under her, who was there. He's helping the girls, he's pushing them. We got a game on next Monday. And it's going to be at South Roward. It's during the, it's a tournament. But we also have one in West Palm Beach at Palm Beach Lakes. Those, both of those, both of those tournaments are in her honor. We'd just like to change the name of Northwest 26th, 24th Avenue to Marcia Pender, Coach Marcia Pender Lane. It's from Sunrise to Panther Lane. It's a block that, it's a two-block area that leads right up to the school. We took that road home sometimes at night. My brother has some things that were on the last plaque that you gave her.
Thank you for your time today. My name is George Pender. As you know, Coach Pender was a very hardworking coach and dedicated. Earned many of her highest honors for high school coaches. And she received numerous prestigious awards, including her induction into the Broward County Sports Hall of Fame in 2002. An induction into the City of Fort Lauderdale Walk of Fame and the Florida Athletic Coaches Association Walk of Fame in 2011. Just a few of the many, many recognitions that she had. And we're asking for the consideration to change the, to change the street name from Northwest 24th Street to Coach Marcia Pender. So we really would appreciate it, and thank you. We thank you for the time also.
Thank you so much for being here, and thank you so much for continuing to lift up Coach Pender's legacy and your continued work and service to students. I think it's absolutely something worth looking at. Commissioner?
I concur, Vice Mayor. And I'm sure we all do because we all participated in all those accolades and awards we gave her here at the city based on her works and talents. And the last, we spoke at a neighborhood meeting that unanimously said that they wanted this to happen. You all are now coming back to, I guess, to expedite that, not the petition way, but the administrative way. And if it's the will or the consensus of us, I would like to see us consider that way since the principal, superintendent then, not superintendent, but school board member, everyone was pushing for this to happen at this meeting. And the block that's in question, if you've ever gone to Dillard High School, is really not a block. It's eight houses on one side, roughly, give or take, eight on the other that leads right into the drop-off ramp to Panther Lane. So it's appropriate, and you don't really change the number of the street. You add a name to the street. And we've seen this happen with us before. And we did a few more blocks. This is just a little piece. And I think if we direct staff in this direction, they probably can figure out a good way to come back. And you guys finish this up in my absence. But it is more than worth doing. And that's what I would say to this subject matter.
Great. Commissioner?
Yes, thank you. And thank you for being here, and so worthy of that honor. I have one question, Greg. Has anything been submitted to? Doesn't this typically go to Ben Rogers at Transportation and Mobility? Gentlemen, have you been aware of the fact that we do have a process for naming streets? You're aware of that process?
We had the petition signed. We had the petition signed. We had a letter written, wrote about why we wanted to have it. And we're willing to pay for the, I think we have to pay for the signs to be changed, to be updated. We're willing to do that.
So Ben, where are we then with that? What's the status of that petition and the process?
Good afternoon, Ben Rogers, Director of Transportation and Mobility. So I'm not aware of the application being submitted. I can check with staff when I get back. But I just want to remind the commission that there's two ways that we could go forward. The first one is through the application process, where they have to get a petition, they have to have neighborhood support, an HOA letter. They have to fund the improvements, and then we move forward with that. We'd bring it back to commission for formal approval. We'd work with Broward County Traffic Engineering to get the signs in place. And then we'd work with them on collecting the cost for that. The second one is for the commission to city, have it be a city initiative. And the city commission provide directions to the city manager. In that case, it would come to my department. We would work with the neighborhood, and we would facilitate the requests with Broward County Traffic Engineering.
Fine, okay, thank you. And I'm fine with that second approach.
Okay. That's what I would suggest is the latter, the city initiative approach to expedite and move forward. I think we've got a majority here. Greg?
Certainly. So just to clarify, it's on Panther Lane between 24th and 26th Avenue, correct?
Sunrise.
It'll be the perpendicular, how it perpendiculars there.
We're going to do the segment that's north and south. It'd go from Sunrise Boulevard to Panther Lane on Northwest 24th.
Okay, so from Sunrise to Panther Lane on Northwest 24th Avenue. Okay.
Yep. And so Greg, just so we're aware, staff will start working on that. Will staff bring back to the city commission a resolution with that detailing that? Is that right?
Correct.
Okay.
It will take us a couple of months. We'll get some sign mockups and some layouts, some cost estimates. We'll bring that back to the commission so you understand the total impact of the project.
Great.
And then once we get that approval from you, then we'll move forward with Broward County Traffic Engineering to get that installed.
And Ben, and you may have this already, but if you could just get the contact information of the gentleman there just to keep the Pender family updated as we're going, that'd be great.
Absolutely.
Okay, good, great, fantastic. Thank you both.
Thank you, thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you, excellent news. Fantastic. Next, we'll go up to the conference reports. CF1, Northwest Progressive Village Flagler Heights Community Redevelopment Agency Project Status Updates. Greg?
Yeah, so certainly, we want to share with you certain updates from the projects that are taking place. We have Clarence that will provide that update and then share with you some insight of the activity.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Vice Mayor and-
Good afternoon.
So for our project status update, what I can do is I'll read through, in as much as you like, the projects that are in progress, where we have projects that are actually being developed at this point in time. And if you look at your report, it is the progress- Clarence, please speak into the microphone.
And what do you want us looking at first, Clarence? Exhibit one?
It would be the, it would be the in-progress report. And I'm not sure which-
Okay, complete, so in-progress, I think is exhibit two.
Yes, exhibit two. So the first project on the in-progress report is the Robert Bethel American Legion Post Project, which was just before you, I think, the last meeting, where we awarded additional funding, about $431,000. That project has received its, the additional funding. And now, we have two bids, and I think we're selecting the final bid. And it'll, we'll be awarding the general contractor in like 30 days. Rhythm 2.0.
Let's just pause it. Any questions, commissioners, on that? Good. Okay, great. Go ahead.
Rhythm 2.0 is already started. Rhythm 2.0 is another restaurant that's right on Sistrunk. You approved additional funding for that project, and the construction has already started for that project. It's in progress.
Okay, thanks. Questions, comments?
Being our enterprise is a project that you approved funding for back in November of 2019. We've had several complications with this project. It was, it had CDBG funding in it. And when we went out for bid, the bids came back so high to where we went and we rebid it again. Those bids were high. So what we decided to do was remove the CDBG funding. The building owner returned that money. We did this in the hopes that it would bring down the pricing because it had Davis Bacon Wages associated with it. We did bring it, bring it back and had it bid it again. The two bids that we have now, one is about just under a million dollars, and the other is like 1.3. So we will have to come back for additional funding. The building owner is actually going to have to contribute, I think, about at least another $300,000. They're going to ask us for another 350,000 in order to get this project going. But we do have what we consider to be the lowest bid for this particular project. And again, what needs to happen is, it needs to come back for additional funding.
Okay, great.
So Junie Restaurant, which is Donna's, Donna Caribbean, that project is almost complete. The contract, I mean, the actual construction is pretty much done. They have some issues that they have to deal with on their parking. But I think they'll be ready to open in January of next year.
I just wanted to make a point of clarification on that project. It would have been completed.
It would have been.
Had not the previous tenant, they was, they included in the development agreement two years ago to keep them there. The tenant died. The relatives or siblings did not want to carry on that business. So it created an opportunity for that developer to expand parking, which they didn't have very much of initially. So now, with the corrections to go back for demo and stuff, I think they went back last week and we made some calls.
Yeah.
That permit is out there, the building is torn down. So I think in that case, the more we can do as staff to make sure they stay on task. Because that was something added, he didn't come back to us. But he's going to have ample amount of parking on that, on that street. So that's, that's not one of these things where costs went out of control. Because he has the restaurant built.
Yeah, it's built. It's pretty much constructed.
Good, okay.
Go ahead, I'm sorry, sir.
Yep, go ahead with Broward College.
So Broward College, this isn't a building. Obviously, Broward College is located in the YMCA. The funding that we provided for this is for the build-out, some of the multimedia capabilities. And then there was also funding for classes and things like that, which they have started the classes. What we have agreed to is that they will give us a report, a quarterly report on those folks that have enrolled and make sure we know who they are, make sure that they're from the redevelopment area. So that's what's happening with Broward College.
Clarence, how is the remaining $500,000 distributed? Like, what will be the frequency of that distribution?
That'll, so the first $500,000 went in initially, again, for the build-out of the space. Then there's an additional $250,000 that will come, I think it's next, it's next, the next semester.
Okay.
And then the following semester after that. So it'll be given in two consecutive semesters after this, after this semester.
And will those both, those $250,000 payments, both be for scholarships?
Yes.
Okay, great. It's fantastic. Excellent questions there, okay.
Okay, and for Thrive, Thrive, we've made payments one, two, and three.
Oh, I'm sorry, did you, did you cover 1551 Sistrunk?
Okay, I think I missed that. 1551 Sistrunk, oh, BND Trap, okay. I'm sorry, I apologize for that.
No problem.
BND Trap, on last week, we did the groundbreaking for BND Trap. So that project is on the way. And, you know, hopefully it'll get finished within the next 12, 12 months.
Great.
And I think why we're, why you're doing this report is because the commissioner wanted an update to see what projects were dragging and what was holding them back. So when you do this, like for BND Trap, for example, we had some situations with building permits where the line of sight prohibited him from keeping the building that he wanted to keep and preserve the history. But because of that line of sight prohibited that, he had to change his plans, tear down the building, and the new building will be erected. Those are the things I think the commissioners wanted to hear when we find out why things are dragging. I'm just glad I was a part of it to say that. So I think he'll be expedient in construction. But a lot of these projects, two things happen, and you can correct me if I'm wrong. Building permitting process. And then a year later or two years later, the prices have changed. And that's what I'm hearing over and over again with each one of these sites, except for the two where it was permitting. But that's important to us so we'll know that no one's just sitting there dragging their feet.
Well, we definitely aren't sitting dragging our feet.
We know that. But this is why we want this report. So just make sure you give that to us. So no explanation needed, sir.
Okay.
Great. Thank you. And then the last one, Thrive.
Five Progressive, again, they're probably anywhere from like 70, I'm sorry?
Are they saying that?
Oh, 75, 75% complete on the first, what I would characterize as the first phase. They've purchased additional properties, and they're looking to come back before the board and, you know, get additional funding for a second phase of their development. But we've actually made the first, the first three payments. We have one payment left. And hopefully, that project will be culminating very soon.
Again, Vice Mayor, if I may?
Yeah, please.
He spoke very softly to what they're gonna be doing. They're coming back for more money. It's not just for the, for the second addition. They too were explaining to me, I'm sure they spoke to other commissioners, that cost and how much they've invested is changing, and they need more. So I want that on the record, because this is happening time and time again with these project, projects in a sunsetting CRA. So it's just important for me that this information is expounded on and brought to our attentions. That's all.
That is, that is, that is the case. And with this Phase 1, they've covered pretty much most of the costs of the additional, the additional increases. What they're coming back for is for a second phase of a project, of property that they purchased. You know, so it's, it's not for the project that they are actually finishing.
I understand that, but his cry to me was, we gotta spend more money now to make this complete. And that's what's happening time and time again. So I don't need an explanation after you've already told me that piece. I wanted to just expound that they need more money to the tune of $5 million, if you want to talk about what the price tag is. But they're coming back, and it's okay to come back. I just want us to be aware of what's lurking to complete this wonderful project that would help complement all the other work that's been done in the CRA boundaries, from Andrews to Broward Boulevard, 24th Street to Sunrise Boulevard. So that's all I'm trying to bring to the table.
Thank you, Commissioner. You are absolutely correct. So the next report is the, and, and, and after talking with Anthony Farharaan yesterday, I think it makes sense that we rename this report because we say it's assigned but not started yet. That's actually a misnomer. These projects have come before the Board of Commissioners, actually, they've gone before the Advisory Board, as well as the Board of Commissioners. We've approved these projects, and now what they are in is some stage of pre-development. It's not that they have not started. All of them have started. And they all have been spending money in the pre-development process to get us to the place to where we can have agreements. We can have agreements. They can start with their, most of them have started their DRC process or completed it. They just have not gotten architectural plans and permits to begin construction. So we will look to change the wording of this heading, and that way it'll be more reflective of where we are in the process. So it doesn't look as if, you know, we've approved projects and there's nothing happening. That's not what's happening. Dale Wheel and Tires.
Well, let's all, hold on one moment, Clarence. So great. And this, at least to me, this report is very helpful to see progression-wise where we are, understanding the process for each of these. So I just, I think it's fantastic. I've spent time going through these. Let me just check in with the commissioner here. Do you want Clarence to go through each one of these individually, or are you able to kind of have viewed these and just want to ask questions if you have any questions?
I'm good.
You're good, yeah.
But if someone else wants to ask, I mean, that's what we're here for.
Commissioner Glassman, what's your desire?
I'm okay either way, but I do have some questions about everything. So I was just waiting for Clarence to finish, but if you want to just go to that, I'm okay with that as well.
Let's go, go right into your questions, I'd say. Yeah.
Okay.
Please. And just tell us which, you know, which page or-
Let's just talk about some updates first, because I think if we go to some of the projects, so I believe the 909 project?
Yes.
That, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, but that's 75% done on the construction documents now.
Yes, yes.
So just some minor revisions, and those permits should be in for January or so. I just want to make sure we update this information with that.
Yes.
Which one is that, Steve?
I think he said 909.
909, E.L. Perez.
So that's page nine of 10 on exhibit, on exhibit, if you-
Right. Also, also that project, again, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that it does have final DRC, which is a minor, a little minor site plan revision. So I just want to make sure that we make this reflective of that information.
Absolutely.
Excellent. Thank you. So is it okay now, Vice Mayor? You want me just to go through some stuff that I had and some questions?
Keep running.
Okay. Thank you. So Clarence, okay, so I went through everything. Here are my questions and also some of my concerns. So if I look at Exhibit 1, first of all, that would be helpful if we could have date awarded and dates of completion like we have on some of the other exhibits. It makes it, I think, easier to put it into context. Because when I look at this, I believe that all of this is pre-2019. And what it looks like was awarded pre-2019 is approximately 33 million, and we did disburse 28 million. But then, if you go to Exhibit 2, which you did cover, Exhibit 2, it only looks to me that right now, in progress, we only have 6 million. So that, to me, looks like a big drop-off of the previous years in Exhibit 1, which were 30 million. So I, I am anxious to just keep things moving and to make sure that we see a little bit more action because some of these projects that go back three years or so, I just think that some of them are in good shape, don't get me wrong, and they're moving forward. Others just seem to be, seem to be lagging. For instance, Exhibit 3, page 5 of 10, the Molly McGuire project.
Yes.
That start date was 9/3/2019. And I don't know, it just seems like that's a long time. When I look at the comments, how, how is that one moving?
So that, that project is actually ready to commence construction at this point.
Great.
Yes.
Okay, thank you for that. I appreciate that. On page 5 of 10, I'm sorry, 6 of 10, the next page, for the West Village, I just want to make sure that's all set now, right, for the groundbreaking and we're in good shape?
Yes, we'll have a groundbreaking on tomorrow.
Excellent. Okay, that's great. The next page, page 7 of 10, Wright Dynasty. It says in the comments that it will return to this CRA to increase the award from 3 million to 4 million. So what's the issue?
So Wright Dynasty is, they have all of their, they have DRC approved, they have all their plans, their plans are complete. And when they went to bid the project, obviously, there's escalation in prices. So they found themselves to be about a million dollars, well, maybe, I think it was more than a million. Actually, it was more than a million. It's about $3 million additional funding needed. But they have, they've taken the initiative, and they have some commitments from Lisk that will help them to fill that void. So they're not gonna need a million. They may need an additional 500,000. And we are looking to come back, if not, on the second meeting, or, well, we can't come the second meeting. The first meeting in December is when we'll come back, so that they can go ahead and, and get going. But they're, they're ready to break ground as well. They just need to have that, that funding issue affirmed up.
Okay, thank you. On Exhibit 3, page 10 of 10, are we in good shape with the Victory Entertainment Complex?
Absolutely. That is going, it's going through DRC at this point. They have not completed their DRC process, but they've actually gotten started with their plans. They've, they've, you know, taken the risk of starting with doing plans. But they, I'm not sure exactly where they are in DRC, but I'll find out. I'm meeting with him on Friday.
Okay.
Find out exactly where they are.
Excellent. That's an exciting project. Page 10 of 10 also, that same Exhibit 3, if you look at the total investment costs, these are projects that are assigned but not started. So the total investment is over 39 million, and the CRA award is 14, and we're still just sort of, sort of sitting on that, right? It hasn't been spent.
So keep in mind that what happens is, is that some of these projects, we've, we've made multiple-year commitments. We've, we've agreed to fund them in multiple years. So the developer, much, much like the Adderley or what we call the West Village, it's the Adderley, the West Village, and Comfort Suites. While they all are ready now, most of them don't want to get going until they have all the funding available. So we closed on Comfort Suites on Friday. That one now will start to get going. We got the final payment for West Village. Now they're ready to go. A lot of it is strategically timing the actual groundbreaking or start date with when the actual money, the final payment that we've made commitments to actually becomes available. And, and that's why sometimes you see it a little, a little lag, but it's not that they're not progressing and moving towards having the project actually completed.
Okay, thank you for that. Exhibit 4, page 1 of 2. So we're looking at a, if you look at the awarded incentives, again, completed almost $35 million. But the in-progress is, is, it drops way down to, you know, the 6 million, and then shoots way back up again on the sign not started. So I, again, and I, and I know you've explained what you just did, so I appreciate that. But when I look at a chart like that, it's just concerning to me that there's such a drop-off.
It, it's somewhat misleading. It's somewhat misleading because, again, what that is contemplating is year 2023, where there's new money that's coming into being, being doled out.
Yeah, is this the, is this the bank, the 20 million bank loan you're talking about?
No, no, no.
Or something different?
It's our new revenues.
Okay.
Revenues that we get every year.
Okay.
What that, what that $5 million actually represents is what's, from our new revenue, what's going to be available for incentives.
Okay.
What's gonna be-
And then, the 20 million, the bank loan?
Yes.
Where's that going?
Those, those are the four projects that are on the last, what is it? Three or four pages of the assigned but not started yet. That's 909, the, the Adderley and the Al Rich. I'm sorry, the Adderley and the Laramore. Victory Entertainment, and then what we were calling Sistrunk View, which is the property that the RFP was rejected and we're gonna be putting back out. That's the $20 million, which is-
That's the 20 million.
Yeah.
Now, this CRA sunsets in '25, is it?
2025, November.
2025.
November, 2025.
And then we're replacing it with the nonprofit, not-for-profit? Is that moving along?
Obviously, we can't replace the CRA.
Right.
But we, we've created the 501(c)(3), the nonprofit organization, to try and finish doing some of the work that the CRA had already started. What's gonna be different is that there is no dedicated funding source. So while we are moving forward, we, we've established our board, we're having regular meetings. Again, once the CRA sunsets, that organization will be like any other 501(c)(3) or nonprofit organization. It'll have to eat what it kills.
Understand. Okay, thank you. And the last questions are regarding the last page, page 2 of 2 on Exhibit 4. So I look at the preliminary list of potential projects of 1 million and greater, and I also see above those projects. Let me ask you a question, because obviously there will be some funding left over. Have we contemplated, you know, when I drive around and I see all the exciting work that's happening and, but we still need to do something in terms of fixing up the streets, the streetscape, perhaps a garage, you know, just the roadways. Are we anticipating doing that kind of work to sort of tie it all together with all of these projects that are happening? Because I see that as a, something that's lacking.
So-
Lighting, parking, maybe even a garage, for all the people that are gonna want to come to all these exciting places like Thrive, Progresso, you know, all these different retail outlets now. So what are, what's the plan for that?
So right now, we are engaged in creating what we, what we're calling our cultural, cultural, Arts and Cultural District. That Arts and Cultural District will try to bring about, I guess, a branding of the area. Entertainment is one aspect of it, trying to tie all of the different areas together. And we're, we're out meeting with the community now and getting feedback from the community as to what it is they would like to see in creating this, in what we are calling a cultural destination. So if streetscapes are, you know, high on the priority list, and because you have now mentioned it, we'll make sure that we put in our work program for that effort, something that would look to tie all of the different areas together. I mean, which, I think that was all of a part, all part of it anyway. But we can be very deliberate and make sure that we do that. If you're talking about streetscape within areas like Thrive, Progresso, I think they already have funding to be able to do that. They have funding, not for a garage, but we have given them Streetscape Grant, I mean, Forgivable Loan, to address, what is it, Fifth? It's, it's Fifth Avenue. We've, we've given them funding for that.
Sorry. I'm discussing in terms of even more than just that. Fixing roads in the entire area, you know, lighting, signage, again, the streetscapes and parking, that the city might have to get involved in and figure that out for, you know, on-street parking, things like that. But as long as you tell me that that's possibly part of the, you know, the charrettes and the work that's gonna be produced by the Art and Cultural District Group.
Yes.
That's great. That's great.
Yes. Absolutely.
Thank you. I'm good, Mayor.
Hello there.
Thank you.
Anyone else have any questions of anybody regarding this item?
If I may?
Yes?
So I'd like to just, you know-
Did you give your report yet on this, or did you-
Yes.
...ask questions first? Okay, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, go ahead.
I'd like to at least give her her flowers. I mean, she and I, we go back and forth, but Ms. Lynn Solomon of-
We don't want to hear the details.
Lynn and, Lynn and Alan, you know, they've been so great in helping us to get all of these development agreements done. If I, if I had to, I mean, I have a list of them here that she sent. She's been really great in pushing all of our developments forward. I mean, she sends me emails on Sunday, and I'm like, "You working?" And she says, "I have to." So I want to publicly give her her flowers and thank her for all of the wonderful work that she's done. Alan, she, she may ask for a raise. But I also like to say that the CRA was, was fortunate. Two weeks ago, we were at the Florida Redevelopment Association's annual meeting, and the CRA did receive two best awards. One for outstanding rehabilitation and renovation or reuse project, and that's Sistrunk Marketplace. And then, most outstanding new building that's in the state of Florida, both of these projects. And that was the YMCA, so thank you for your leadership.
Thanks, Clarence. Great work. Thank you so much, Clarence. Any other questions with regard to CF1? So Clarence, excuse me a second. So Clarence, you're gonna be able to keep us updated with regard to the progress- of these projects on an ongoing basis, recognizing the fact that this commission has stated more than once that if some of these projects have become stale and there's a possibility of, of, uh, bringing that money back into the, uh, into the account for future projects, you'll continue to provide that information to us?
Absolutely, and, um, we are monitoring our projects. Anything that does, that's not moving and they're not spending money, which we've done in the past.
So, so I, we may not have a policy, but in your, do you have like a cutoff date? Like if it's, if X number of years, you know, there's, you see no, uh, no request for the money or no, uh, affirmative attempt to try to move forward on the project? Do you have some milestone that you've established that would help give us guidance in this regard?
Yes, uh, and again, a nod to Lynn and the Law Department. In all of our development agreements, there is, uh, uh, instance of default. Um, every development project has a timeline. Everyone has a timeline and, uh, not meeting certain milestones or the timelines is an instance of default. If they default based on not meeting their timeline, they have an opportunity to cure. Um, and, and typically, you know, as we did with, uh, the Margaret project, if there's no movement with respect to, um, getting their entitlements, uh, getting their architectural, if there's no movement and we are in touch daily, you know, we live this. If there's no movement, we know, we give them an opportunity, but, uh, as our sunset date draws closer, we're a little less tolerant in giving, um, opportunities to cure default.
Well, that's really important because if, if the money comes back into the account, it's not a, a spent dollar amount and once the CRA expires, we are putting at risk the ability to use that money for CRA projects, are we not?
So, um, here's where you probably can help us. Funding that was assigned to a project, uh, from an incentive account, if we claw that money back, we can't put it back into an incentive because of policy of the CRA.
I get that, but, but if, if, if the program expires and the money is, been clawed back, we can't use that money anymore.
Well, that's not necessarily the case because, um, what we should, you know, um, understand is that we're going to expire or the sunset of the CRA will happen and there'll still be money that we can put out. What we can do is what we did, and I mentioned this before, is what we did with the beach. Even if we don't extend the life of the CRA with the, uh, trust fund, we could extend the life to, 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 to finish the projects that we...
To finish the project that have already been approved?
Well, that's why we're gonna make sure.
If there's no approved project and there's money in the bank, Alan, at some point you'll have to give us a, uh, an opinion on that, but I think the county is gonna be banging down our door saying, "We want that money." So, and I don't blame them.
Just to speak to your point, prior to you arriving, how we viewed reports and the other commissioners can help me, um, they brought us up to speed that it looks like something may not be moving, but all of their projects are moving. And he explained the nuts and bolts of how they are moving and what we might think is not moving is moving, so it won't be a part of your question. And then Anthony Fajardo, um, even went a step further to say we need to retitle the report so it reflects, uh, what that report really is. And there aren't, and you correct me, Clarence, if I'm wrong, there aren't any projects that right now that fits the criteria that the mayor is inquiring about.
Absolutely.
Okay. Good to know. All right. Thank you. First of all, I wanna apologize to everybody that I'm late for this meeting.
I'm jealous.
Our president was in town and, uh, he needed someone to fist bump him coming off the plane, so, anyway.
I'm jealous.
Thank you. All right. Um, so onto business one, the Tunneltop Art, uh, Update. Josh, are you here? Yes, he is.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioner. Joshua Carden, the Cultural Affairs Officer for the city. Hope you're all doing well. Thanks for having me back today. Um, I came with some really exciting updates on the James Windler Laird Trust gift to the city of Fort Lauderdale. Um, over the past two weeks since we presented this to you, the first time we've been working with the estate attorney and the trustee to determine kind of the terms of the condition and donation. So I'm really happy to report that everything is going smoothly, um, and the terms have pretty much been developed, um, that we would need to place a plaque at Tunneltop Park that would note that the James Windler Laird Trust was responsible for all of the artwork at Tunneltop Park and designate this abstract space as the James Windler Laird Arts Park at Tunneltop Park. The park itself would retain the name Tunneltop Park.
Unless we choose to name it?
Absolutely, of course. Um, yes. And, um, each artwork plaque would also note the donor's name on it, so it would say artist, title, city of Fort Lauderdale, and at the bequest of the James Windler Laird Trust. Um, the first two pieces have been identified. They come up on the screen. Do you have them before you? Exhibit one, our presentation.
Actually, while we wait for that, um, as that's loading up, I was gonna ask, uh, there was an inquiry about, uh, the donor.
Yes.
You could talk about that.
Yeah, absolutely. So I, of course, did not know Mr. Laird, unfortunately, but through my research, he was a longtime Fort Lauderdale resident who always was a huge philanthropist for the arts. So he gave millions of dollars to organizations like SunServe, Our Fund, the Gamens Course of South Florida, as well as Island City Stage. So he was always someone who wanted to support the arts through his efforts and through his, um, foundation and fund, so we applaud him for that, of course. Um, he passed away unfortunately in Fort Lauderdale, um, and he wanted to use his remaining legacy to really support and harbor an environment of arts and culture within our city. So I, we're very grateful for him. Um, again, I don't know him personally, but he seemed like a lovely man, um, who chose to make his home Fort Lauderdale.
So is Josh, is the entire five million, uh, have to be spent for Tunneltop Park or other locations as well? Cause we won't hit five million with these two pieces.
Yes, sir. Um, there's been discussion of that as well and this trust seems very open to expanding this abstract arts park into other areas of the city.
Excellent. Cause I can definitely think of a few places it might be nice, but...
Yeah.
Okay, good. I just wanna make sure there was that flexibility.
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, great. Thanks.
But keep in mind, Commissioner, I think it would be nice, uh, I think if there is an opportunity to, to locate artwork in other parts of the city, that would be great. But I would, I personally, and, you know, we can talk about this, I personally think it would be great to have, uh, a destination there at Tunneltop where a person can come to the city and see and be surrounded by, uh, a whole series of, of, you know, Class-A artworks that could be identified with our city, not just a random piece here or there, but to actually create an, a real park, a real setting to be surrounded by, you know, this great artwork that the committee and, and, and also, um, Bonnie Barnett, I wanna thank you for all the work you've done, uh, to help pull this together and continue to work with us on trying to bring great, you know, a fort, uh, well, here's an, here's an example of the piece of, of, uh, of sculpture that's being presented tonight. Just, it's just something that I think no other city has and I would love to see it Fort Lauderdale identified as having an art park right in the middle of its downtown, uh, in a highly, uh, traffic pedestrian location. Um, those are just my thoughts, Commissioner.
No, I, I definitely agree and understand what you're saying, um, but because of the location of Tunneltop, you know, we get into engineering, engineering issues, we get into FDOT concerns.
I think the whole thing is gonna have to be, uh, involved, I think FDOT's gonna have to be involved with all of it.
Absolutely.
Cause it is an FDOT site.
Right. Oh, definitely. I mean, there's easement concerns. So I guess my concern is that you might not be able to get that many pieces in there. That's all. I'm just wondering if...
Well, it's gonna go from Laurel Ward to the tip of the, of the gray section, so...
Right.
If you have five or six, you know?
Right.
Uh, depending upon the price, but if the trust is interested, it should be, find that we've already established a sufficient number and quality of, of art pieces for the Tunneltop and there's money left over, uh, I'm sure the trustee would be very happy to talk with us about...
Right.
Maybe locating something at the Yolo, at, not Yolo, at the, at the Loop. And, um, um, I can think of a couple of interesting, um, things that would be very, uh, appropriate for that location.
Yeah. I was just wondering if we did have that flexibility. Again, I, I know that this is gonna be an amazing site, Tunneltop Park, um, but I also wanna make sure that each piece has the space that it needs to really be enjoyed. I don't wanna just cram pieces there just to, for the sake of having everything in one location.
Air Commission, it's a big park.
I understand. I'm good. I'm good. I just wanna make sure we had the flexibility, if there were a million or two left over, to maybe place it somewhere else. Thank you. I'm, I'm good, though.
And Josh, in terms of dollars for like maintenance and upkeep and, and so forth, is, is that, is that being considered?
Yes, absolutely. As part of the escrow agreement that the city would enter into, I recommend ten percent be kept aside for the future maintenance of the collection.
Great. And it's, and maybe you're gonna get to this, but it sounds like very positive, um, discussion with Public Arts Placement Board too, which I felt was important to kind of make sure everyone had a chance.
Yes, absolutely. I presented to the Public Art and Placement Advisory Board yesterday.
Great.
Um, a motion was made to, um, recommend that the city commission accept the donation and that the estate and trust work with the Public Art and Placement Advisory Board for future pieces.
Great. And I think that was a unanimous vote?
Yes, sir.
Is that right?
Absolutely.
To support this and, which is fantastic.
Absolutely.
So we just saw one piece. Is it just one piece, right?
No, no. There's a few pieces. I've got, got a whole presentation. Don't worry. No. Um, so this is the first piece by Mark Quinn. It's called Broken Sublime. It was created in twenty fifteen and is made of stainless steel. It's approximately ten by eight feet, which is the appropriate scale for the park. Um, also, it's the fact that it's stainless steel makes it incredibly easy to clean and maintain and upkeep over the years. It would be very hard to hurt. Also, if it's vandalized or it's graffitied, we would be able to clean it off with a solvent without doing major conservation work. So this piece was negotiated from seven hundred and twenty-five thousand down to six hundred and fifty thousand through Christie's Private Sales, um, because the artist wants this piece displayed in our city and publicly for our neighbors to enjoy. So all in all, after engineering and installation and shipping and storage for a little while, this project would probably come in right under a million dollars.
And, um, people can interact with this, is that right? Like my six-year-old daughter can, can touch it and they're, they're, they're gonna be able, okay.
Yeah, meant to be touched, meant to be enjoyed. I would recommend signs that say, "Please do not climb on it."
Good.
Um, but overall, it can be touched and it won't be damaged.
If you put your ear to it, you could hear this.
You hear that? Nice. Put your ear to it, you can hear the bean in Chicago, is what you hear.
Yes.
Nice. And just, Josh, and I know we've touched on this, but some neighbors have asked me, structurally and from a kind of, uh, engineering standpoint, you know, in terms of the, the ability to withstand the weight and so forth, our understanding is that's, FDOT's, uh, you know...
We would definitely need to go back for some engineering studies of Tunneltop Park. The foundation and slab itself is only six to eight inches deep, so the real concern is not necessarily the weight of the piece, but the wind load of the piece due to Florida Building Code and hurricane requirements. So it may require, um, an additional pedestal or platform be created to support the wind of the piece.
Got it.
So what, so Josh, just ballpark, what does a piece like this weigh? Would it be five hundred pounds, two thousand pounds? Cause a car is certainly the equivalent of what...
Absolutely. It probably weighs about the same as a car, about two thousand pounds. Um, but again, it's not necessarily the slab supporting the weight, it's the wind load and the pressure that...
The torrid effect.
The kind of the pull that it would create on top of that slab, unfortunately. Um, but it is possible, it would just take some reworking of the integrity of the structure.
Okay. You're gonna put up another piece?
And by the way, Mayor, just so you know, we will actually have, uh, once we acquire this piece, there will be times in Fort Lauderdale where we have two amazing, uh, pieces from Mark Quinn. Um, and the other one is actually located on a cruise ship that is often in our port.
Which is?
Uh, I believe it's the Celebrity Apex. And his, uh, his piece is, um, I'm gonna look it up for you right now. It's called Frozen, Frozen Wave.
Is it permanently on the ship or is it coming?
Yes, it's permanently on the ship. And so I, when this, when Bonnie first brought these pieces to our attention, I texted her immediately and I said, "This looks very familiar. I think I know this artist." And yes, I, I went back and looked at some photos and, uh, so we'll actually have, when the ship is in, in our port, we'll have two pieces by this sculptor. It's very exciting.
Wow. That's great.
Um, so I won't read all of this to you, but it's a very poetic statement about the piece and, uh, Mark Quinn's fascination with the ecological impact of man on nature. So it's really frames this piece as an ecosphere where vulnerability in the face of man's ruthless and relentless exploitation of its resources, while also unveiling the magnificence of the naturally occurring patterns through its monumental scale. So it's gorgeous. This is a piece of it in C2 at White Cube Gallery in London where it was originally exhibited. Um, this is just a little bit about Mark Quinn and some of his previous works. He rose to prominence as part of the iconoclastic group of young British artists in the early nineties in London, along with other artists like Tracy Emin, uh, Chris O'Feely, Damien Hirst. So he's a internationally renowned artist, well-known across the globe. So having this piece in our collection would be a huge coup for the city, of course. Um, this is where it is currently exhibited in Somerset House in London with other pieces of his Archaeology of Art collection. And the other proposed piece is by R and R Studios, which is an artist duo out of Miami. They've done work all over South Florida, including the mural at our NSU Art Museum right here in Fort Lauderdale. So this is a piece they created for the Young Art Museum that says, "I love you," and the proposed piece would spell out FTL in monumental letters or hashtag FTL in monumental letters. So this piece would be site-specific and fabricated especially for the city and the site at Tunneltop Park. It's approximately twelve feet high and twenty feet long and again, would need to go through some engineering studies to determine what would be required to install this piece.
So it's not this piece, but it's a piece to be commissioned?
It's a piece to be commissioned, exactly. So it would be site-specific and they can work with our Public Art and Place Advisory Board as well as the trust to determine the colors and the placement and overall feel of the work. Um, but it would be similar to this piece, um, as far as the, um, aluminum coloring and the actual structure of the letters.
Okay. Great.
These are just some other pieces that they've created throughout the U.S. They also have work in downtown Miami, um, at the University of Dallas, or University of Texas, I'm sorry, and Princeton University. Um, they create architecture and artworks that perform as social sculptures and tools for the pursuit of happiness. The ambition of their practice is to reclaim, enhance, and develop the public dimension of the city, seeking to produce a public architecture that highlights the communal and civic dimension of life and erases boundaries between art and everyday life, which I think is incredibly appropriate for our city and especially downtown Fort Lauderdale. So this is, of course, a site plan of Tunneltop Park. These yellow rectangle here, um, is just to give you an idea of the scale of the piece within the park. Um, it would probably be best to position this piece on one of these artificial turf areas for, um, ideal photo opportunities and placemaking activities, but that would again be dependent on the engineering required to, um, install that piece there. The Mark Quinn piece, um, would be located over here next to the fountain, um, and parallel to the Stranahan House. Um, again, and this is just another piece of the Archaeology of Art Collection from Mark Quinn at White Cube in London. And I would love to answer any questions you may have about this. Um, some of the other agreement...
Any other questions of Josh?
Yeah.
Looking forward to that signature piece that's gonna be on the edge of the Tunneltop.
Great.
Okay. There are a couple of people who've asked to speak.
All right.
Thank you, Josh. Thank you very much.
Very exciting. Thank you, Josh. Thank you, Bonnie. Thank you.
Thanks, Bonnie.
So Melinda Balker followed by Bonnie Barnett.
Uh, hello, Mayor and Commissioners. It's, uh, Melinda Balker. I'm speaking, um, as President of the Downtown Fort Lauderdale Civic Association. Um, at your last meeting, I believe, um, on October eighteenth, this did come up and you, um, did request comment from our Neighborhood Association, which I appreciate. Um, the timing has been really tight. Um, I know it's been tight for everyone, um, but I was able to... But I was able to speak with Joshua Carden. Last week, I was able to share the proposed art pieces and the naming terms with the neighborhood. I asked for feedback. And then I did ask my board to directly give me a vote despite the fact that we are in between an October and November official board meeting. But overall, I'm pleased to say that we have a majority of our board that is definitely in favor of accepting the terms of the bequest by the Laird Estate. Overall, I think that we're actually very excited for this public art to be downtown. We do have a deficit of public art downtown, as you know. There were just a few things that we did note. One of the things I know Ben has just brought up was with regards to the maintenance. We're glad there's going to be a portion of the trust set aside for maintenance. We think it's very important. We have another piece downtown, which is called Seminole Girl. I'm sorry, it's called Florida. She's a seminal girl and she has lost part of her artwork. Her palm fronds have been missing for a while. So we just want to make sure these pieces are maintained. The other thing we noted is we would recommend that it not, that the FTL large scale not be hashtag FTL, but just be FTL. We want it to be a piece that's more timeless and in five, 10 or 20 years, we may see that the hashtag falls out of style. So we don't want it to be decommissioned or look dated. And then with regards to the remaining monies, we're delighted that the Public Art and Placement Advisory Board will be involved as well as commission in looking at those items. And we're just delighted with the first two pieces that were selected. I did get two comments from residents. One was concerned, as you've spoken about the weight combined with pedestrian weight as well as planting. And the other person was generally not happy with the Tunnel Top project in general and thought that the FTL would be distracting and belonged at the airport. But the board fully supports the Laird bequest and is happy to receive it downtown.
Great, thank you. Bonnie Barnett.
Mayor, Vice Mayor and City Commissioners, I'm very excited about the Quinn acquisition. And thank you, Josh. That was a great explanation. But I did want everybody to know that inside the shell, there's a reflective area, almost like Anish Kapoor with the bean in Chicago. But we can't afford a bean at $20 million, so we chose this. Also, I want to explain to you that Christie's Auction House's private sale, they helped Mark Quinn come down $150,000 so we could secure this piece. And also, I'd like to also tell you that Mark Quinn cut his shipping cost half because the piece is already pre-created. So we got a fantastic situation from him. Also, the piece is about 4,000 pounds. So I think that's adequate. It won't blow away. And the second piece I wanted to tell you about Roberto, that he's now doing a piece at Yale and he's lecturing up there and he's very excited to get this piece started. And he's ready to get it started. So we're very excited. I just wanted to thank all of you helping us to secure this and the community.
Great, thank you so much. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak on this? Okay, they're being done. What's the next steps, Mr. City Manager?
So we have a walk-on item. If you all agree that this is something that you would like to receive as a donation, in the evening, the walk-on item allows you to consider the item and vote on accepting the donation.
Okay, great. Thank you so much. Onto business two, La Sol's Marina construction update. Who's going to speak to that? Mr. Rogers?
Good afternoon, Mayor. Commissioner Ben Rogers, Director of Transportation Mobility. Just want to provide a quick update on the La Sol's Marina project. As this project continues to remain on schedule and move forward, there's going to be some different impacts that the community might experience in the next, in the next coming months. So just want to provide a brief overview on that. So first thing I want to highlight is just construction progress. Suntech has been on top of their game. They've been working closely with the neighborhood. They've been keeping the city informed and advised along the way. And on this slide, you can see some of the progress they've made. They've already demoed most of the water docks and the seawall along the northern edge. They've also relocated the D31 pump station. On this slide, you can see the magnitude of that project. It was substantial work effort, a lot of coordination. The pump station's not active at this point, but it is in place. And, you know, as part of this project, improving the city's infrastructure was one of the deliverables. And so that's underway and it replaces a failed and aged pump station. Upcoming work to keep everyone advised. The next phase will be some sheet pile installations. As you can see on the slide, number one is the initial segment that they'll be doing. They started the work last week and as of yesterday, they were doing about 80 truck loads per day. So there is substantial work being done. Once they move forward with the sheet piles, we'll also begin dredging. They'll start at the northern edge and kind of take it piece by piece and layer it out. And also on, on this map, you can see we do have some utility conflicts that we need to resolve with some of the providers. And once that's done, then they can finalize the infrastructure improvements and then activate the new pump station. And again, I just want to highlight some of the outreach that's been going on. Suntech has been very proactive. They've been working with the HOAs, keeping everyone informed. And again, they started the hauling process yesterday. They're educating some of the drivers on the routes. They're working through the issues. But again, overall, just wanted to keep the commission apprised as there'll be substantial more trucks, probably some noise and other impacts associated with the progress of this project. Happy to take any questions your behalf.
Anyone from the commission have any questions of Mr. Rogers?
Not so much as questions, but just to say thank you, Ben. I, I want everyone to understand that the, the outreach has been really incredible. And I wanted to thank Eric Metz from Suntech. This really is a model way to do a huge project and keep everybody in the loop with regular meetings, minutes, no surprises, letting people know when there are issues that are coming up that are a problem, how we're going to fix them. Because a project like this, obviously, every once in a while, we've already experienced a few things. But the way it's been handled has been just excellent. I just wanted to make a mention of that. So thank you, Ben. Eric Metz, wherever you are, Suntech, wherever you are, if you're listening, thank you very much. I know that the neighbors really appreciate it. It's a huge project. And when it's finished, it's going to be really magnificent. It's going to be, you know, coming off of the boat show week. I did hear a lot of excitement about people that know that we're building this super yacht marina right here. And there is such a demand for it. So I, I just wanted to say thank you for all of the incredible outreach and communication. It's, it's really what it's all about. And I know that the neighbors really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Vice Mayor, do you have anything?
Yeah, just thank you, reiterate, thank you for the collective effort and work. And it's just fantastic where we're heading. Thank you.
Thank you, Ben. Anthony Matthew, are you still here? Oh, there you are. Hi.
Thank you. I just wanted to alert the committee, I don't know if there's room for solar at this marina, but the Department of Energy just came out with a new app called Solar App Plus that has a deadline of November 4th. And with the demand of solar due to the Inflation Reduction Act, the app, which is giving away $15,000 to the city for incorporating it before November 4th, will allow the city to speedy permit approve solar. And as you may be aware, more solar will be installed in the next two years than the last 40 years combined due to the Inflation Reduction Act. So I'm not sure if, you know, this is the appropriate forum, but I just wanted to kind of slide in, talk about solar for a moment for the yacht marina community and also alert the community to the deadline of the Department of Energy's app.
Commissioner Glassman, I don't think this is the forum to answer your question. I mean, we gave the, we gave the contract to Suntech and I think whatever the specifications were that they provided is going to be what is built. But certainly, if you want to contact them directly and notify them of these opportunities, I'm sure they would appreciate that. But Commissioner, I don't think that solar sourcing energy was part of the
I do not believe so. But I mean, I'm sure, you know, Greg's here, Ben's here. They can certainly talk to Eric and others at Suntech and see what the possibilities are. Sure.
Especially since that law wasn't passed when we approved it. So this is something that's new. So they may, they may want to be alerted to this. So we appreciate your bringing to our attention.
I appreciate that. Do you know who I might speak to at the city to introduce?
Mr. Rogers can, can give you his
He's right there.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to business three, the Aquatic Complex update. Hi there.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon, Mayor, Commissioners, City Manager and all. Carl Williams, Parks and Recreation Deputy Director. I'm here before you to provide a presentation for the update of our aquatic center. Joining me is Laura Vogt, our Aquatic Center Manager. And we also have representation from Hensel Phelps with Corey Olson as the Operations Manager. As a recap of the project, in 2018 August, we were provided direction to move forward with a base project of 27 million for the construction on a design build contract. In 2019, we moved forward with the groundbreaking for the, to kick off the construction for the project. In 2020, commission approved some additional items for the facility. That included the observation deck on the north side of the property as well as the 27-meter dive tower. In review of the project and in short order, an additional element was included under a separate agreement, which was the construction of a new south building for the aquatic center. In 2021 of July, we held a dive tower, where we, a dive tower dedication. And that is where we did the topping of the dive tower. In June of 2022, we provided a media day where we actually had several of the dive towers or dive members jump off of the dive tower. Now, mind you, there's several heights of the, within the dive tower. And we'll kind of talk through that a little bit more throughout this presentation. End of September 12th, 2022, is when we had a soft opening of the, of the aquatic center. And we are opening as of now and beginning to bring back some programs. As an overview of what we expended for this particular project, the base project, including the, the dive tower and the north, north observation deck totaled 34 million. The south building, which was under a separate agreement, was constructed and the total amount is roughly $9 million. This particular building has the weight room, lifeguard station, meeting rooms, offices for staff, et cetera. Additionally, there's about $2.5 million in additional funds that went towards permitting, change orders, equipment and some material testings. The total tie, the total cost for the project is in a total amount of 47 million.
Good afternoon, Laura Vogt, Aquatic Complex Manager. Just, there's just some pictures of the progress for the construction. This picture right here is actually, oh, did I do something there? Okay, thank you. My favorite part of the project today with us is the Project Superintendent Kevin Curry. And he manages part of the project for Hensel Phelps Construction Company. This is the main competition pool and what you see here are auger cast piles. And they were cutting them down to create the foundation for the new pool surface. And this is just amazing to see the project and the construction firsthand every day. And this very labor-intensive to get that pool built there with the new foundation. Brand-new foundation. There's over 600 new piles in the new aquatic center. And the old piles were there. They're really actually in great shape. So this is what they look like before they're cut down. So this is actually the dive well. There's a couple interns down there at the bottom of the pool. And you'll see that little pink line on there and that's how far they have to cut those down to create the foundation of the dive well. So that dive well is six meters deep, which is 20 feet. And this, there's like 35 piles just for that dive well alone to hold that foundation in. This is the new observation deck that was added scope to the project. This is actually creating the elevator. It's a lobby area to get to the viewing deck on, opposite of the diving tower and the diving pool. Just some of the form work. It's, I just, I think it's like sort of like artwork. I know it was not as beautiful as that conch shell that we see, saw, but it was nice to see this firsthand going up. So here's the main competition pool. This is a stretch 50-meter pool. This is just taking a look at the forming work and they're putting in the gutter system there. And 25 meters wide, 10 lanes, 50-meter lanes. Putting the grandstands together with all the bracing, the new seating for the grandstands, 1,522 seats. Just some more of that bracing there and how they, putting that together with the north side of the main competition pool. Just another view here. Here's the dive well with the dive tower. And you could see over there on the far side, the forming of the south building. Putting that in that added, that's another 1,500 square feet there on that building. So let's see. Here that building is right there going, it's a sunset picture. They worked sunrise to sunset to put this in. This is just a view of the main competition pool, the dive tower. And they were doing, you see that striped concrete truck in there. They're pouring concrete down to the middle of the, till the sun went down on that day. And then here we are today. This is one of the pictures right before the opening day with the new dive tower. This is from the center lane of the main competition pool. Like I said, it's 10 lanes, 50 meters long. The grandstands and the new south building on the side over there. We just got the temporary certificate of occupancy for that one just a few weeks ago. And the dive tower there is nine platform levels. This was the day right before we had our soft opening. I was there early in the morning to make sure the sports lighting went up. And this is sunrise and the view from upstairs on an observation deck.
Thank you, Laura. Now, as we mentioned earlier in this presentation, the facility is open on a limited programming basis. We received our temporary certificate of occupancy for the south building, which I mentioned was under a previous contract. And for the entire project, for the base project, rather, we did receive a certificate of occupancy on October 10th. Now, I'm sure we're all wondering, when are we going to do this unveiling? And so we are working to attempt to get this here done, to have a ribbon scudding, ribbon cutting scheduled the last week in December. And we will provide more details as that comes available, but that is our goal at this time. With the facility open, naturally, we want to bring some of our programs that we held in our community pools, which is our swim team had some use of our community pools. Of course, our dive team is now back. We also have lap swim where we have the general public come. We also engage in training and things of that nature with our facility. Now that we are open, of course, there's a lot of interest. And Laura and her team can attest that, you know, she's been getting a lot of phone calls and a lot of interest, individuals wanting to have contact events at our facility. And so to this point, we've got several events from the new calendar year all the way until May. And a couple of things here in closing. So as we know, the facility has three new pools. One was refurbished. pools, one was refurbished, and a dive tower, and an observation deck. We're currently working with our support team members in IT for some security, some connectivity, as well as our procurement department to furnish the site. It is our plan throughout the coming weeks, months, to be able to provide point of sale for the facility so that we can accept credit, debit cards, and checks as forms of payments. We are currently working with the Hall of Fame Partners on a comprehensive agreement so that we can iron out those details for the east and west buildings of the facility.
So what's, what's the status of that?
So we've had several meetings with the Hall of Fame Partners and kind of working through the contractual elements of that, and some of the financial outcomes that are associated with it. It's our hope, and I know that there's been some discussions to kind of bring that out within the next month or so, and so we're working to try to get that in front of you by then.
Could you? Okay, thank you. Yes, sir.
Yes, with regards to that, and by the way, it's exciting, we have already approved as a commission the interim agreement on the east and west buildings. But there's a lot to vet there. I think that's what staff's going through. I would hope that we would see it in December or January. But there's a lot to make sure that the city's not too much at risk in terms of all of the retail spaces and costs to the city, but from what I'm being told by staff, it's moving along.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Okay.
Does that complete your report?
That is complete the report, but we, we, thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Anyone have any questions?
I actually had some, just comments. So thank you, Carl, and thank you, Phil, and Laura, and also Corey Olson with Hensel Phelps. You know, I, I just wanted to comment. I did attend the International Swimming Hall of Fame inductees ceremony just a couple of weeks ago, and not only is there excitement about this facility in our own country, but, but really worldwide. People are so excited about what we've done here, and I wanted to thank staff for all of the work on this and really making it happen in relatively quick time. But, you know, I wanted to just make a point. We're, three of our colleagues, Vice Mayor, Commissioner McKenzie, and Commissioner Maritas are leaving the dais after today's meeting. And I wanted to just say thank you to them and to you, Mayor, and even to myself, because I don't think, I don't think we get enough comments, especially not from our hometown newspaper, about how we have revitalized public spaces in the city of Fort Lauderdale. Think about, think about what this commission inherited. We inherited Lockhart Park, which was all weeds, nothing happening, certainly not Stranahan and Fort Lauderdale High School playing football there again. This facility that we're looking at now, total disrepair for what, a decade? Bleachers closed, nothing happening, pools closed. We saw so many iterations of how this facility was going to come back in the last commission. Nothing ever seemed to happen. No one could agree. This commission brought it back, and it's thriving already, and the excitement nationwide and worldwide is incredible.
In fact, this Friday, at the American Institute of Architects banquet, this tower has been nominated for a prize, for an award for its design.
Exactly, because it is the only one of its kind in the entire Western Hemisphere in the world. The one in China that matches the height of the 27 meters doesn't look like this at all. It's very, just industrial and very plain. But yes, that's exactly why it's getting that award. And the diving community that I spoke to at the induction ceremony are thrilled to be coming back to Fort Lauderdale to be at this site across from the ocean. No one in the country or the world has a facility like this across from an ocean. And so we should be very proud of this. We have to tell these stories because I'm so disappointed in our hometown newspaper that never tells these stories of what's going on in this city. And then I left out War Memorial Auditorium. My God, we were bleeding over a million dollars a year, every year. The facility was in total disrepair, and now we have the Florida Panthers coming in, bringing Fort Lauderdale its first ice drinks ever in our history, where families will go, children can skate, children can go see the Florida Panthers train, and they will be more pickleball. There'll be everything else that we're doing in the parks, because don't get me started, I didn't even get into what we're doing with the parks bond. You would never know, because if you read our hometown newspaper, you'd never know that we did pass a parks bond for $200 million, and we're adding land, and we're adding parks, and we're improving all of our parks. So you can tell that I'm just getting a little revved up here, but this project just reminds me, and I wanted to say thank you, Vice Mayor, your last meeting. Thank you, Commissioner McKenzie, your last meeting. Thank you, Commissioner Maritas, your last meeting, because we as a team, we as a team did this, and I'm very, very proud. I'm done. Thank you. Thank you, Carl.
Thank you.
Thanks. And Commissioner Glassman, if I could just add, I completely agree with you. And, you know, out of those park bond dollars, I think $20 million went to our schools.
Yeah.
In partnership with our public schools in the city of Fort Lauderdale, never been done before. And it is just amazing how we, I'm proud of collectively how we've invested in the community in ways never even imagined.
Joint use parks.
Joint use parks.
Joint use parks. Right. What city steps up, the schools are not our purview.
Correct.
The schools are not our responsibility. That is a school board function in Broward County, and yet, as a city, we created an education officer for the first time ever in the history of our city. We have a re-energized education advisory board, and we are paying attention.
Yep.
Maybe because three of us were former teachers, and we understand the importance of education.
I was a former student.
Excuse me?
I was a former student.
You were a former student. Thank you. Always learning, always learn.
I had a lot of fun in the playground.
And yes, and so as a city, this commission, this commission hired an education officer, and we pay strict attention. We pay for officers in the schools.
Correct.
We don't have to do that. We pay for joint use parks so that schools, when they're not in session, our neighborhoods, some of which are park deserts, can enjoy the parks that we're creating in the schools, and we did that as a partnership. We didn't have to do that. And you know what? I don't think I've ever read a word about any of this in the Sun Sentinel. Isn't that amazing?
The Sun what?
Yes. Can you imagine? Not a word about any of these accomplishments as you three people exit the dais. Not a word of what you did, and in conjunction with the mayor and me. Not one single word. Only criticism. Shame, shame on our hometown newspaper. I'm good. Thank you.
And Commissioner, if I could, you know, it starts with the people. It starts with the people out here. They're at commission meetings, they're pouring in, they're helping us be better representatives, helping support us, encourage us, giving us ideas, and helping be part of the process. And I'm proud of that. Proud of their participation, and I'm proud of us as a team of what we've been able to do.
Without a doubt. I don't know any city that probably has an organization like the Council of Fort Lauderdale Civic Assessations.
Yep.
And everything that bubbles up, grassroots from every single neighborhood that participates, that's why we do what we do, to make sure that folks have the park space, to make sure they have the amenities, to make sure they can go to a swimming facility from anywhere in the city, to make sure they can go ice skating in Holiday Park, to make sure that they can go to Lockhart and watch a professional soccer game. Yes, all of that is for the quality of life for our citizens. Obviously, number one is always our safety, and that's why we've increased the number of police officers, we've increased the number of fire, because that's our number one. But after that, I can't imagine another commission that has been as responsive to the needs of the citizens in Fort Lauderdale. And again, it starts at the grassroots, at that neighborhood level, where we have such engaged, incredibly engaged neighborhoods. I attend, or my staff attends almost every single one of them in District Two. They are very engaged.
Yep.
And the input is incredible. I just think that as a team and as a city, we have so much to be thankful for. I had, you know, I wasn't even going to get into any of this, but listening to Carl's presentation and watching what's happening in just this one facility, just made me realize all of these other facilities that we've brought back from the dead, and I just wanted to say thank you. Thank you to the colleagues that are leaving our dais, because this was a team effort. Thank you.
I look forward to continuing to work with you and the members of our community, but clearly, these have become signature venues for sporting, as well as the opportunities that we've been able to partner with the school board in trying to maximize the use of real estate that they themselves could not on their own. So you just missed all the applause for you, Commissioner.
Oh, okay.
He's shy.
And a couple other pieces, Mayor is.
Came back to take a bow.
Okay, okay. There you go. And, you know, those joint use parks are used by students during the day. When the public has no access to them, our students are using them, and it makes our schools better. Another piece I'm really proud of, Commissioner, is the team we've hired as, as a city commission, city attorney, city manager, city clerk, city auditor. I just think we've done a fantastic job. They've done a fantastic job driving our city forward.
Thank you. I agree with you. Absolutely. Okay, let us move on to business four. This is regarding the EMS Advisory Committee. Is, who's going to be giving that report?
Yes.
Chantel.
Deputy Chief Chantel will be providing.
Chief?
This proposal, and as requested by the city commission.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon, Mayor, Commissioner Chantel Bottin, Deputy Fire Chief, Fire Rescue. I appreciate the time that you've given us to introduce this proposal. But let me just start with the backstory that brought us here today. So interested parties within the community wanted to revisit conversations regarding EMS and public safety initiatives. After meeting with Mr. William Brown, we came up with the idea of an advisory committee. During our meeting, we brainstormed a few ideas, which I'll present today. So simply stated, the purpose of this committee is to be a think tank, with members representing the community and the fire rescue subject matter experts. These meetings will allow us to scrub the future initiatives as we continue to grow. No matter how much the firefighters are out in the public, we may never get the actual unfiltered voice of the community in which we serve. These members will engage with our subject matter experts to overview the needs internally and externally to support public safety. They will assist, excuse me, they will assist fire rescue with our future planning for growth and placement of vital and essential resources to provide the elite public safety to those we serve. We will also review the best practices and ensure that they align with our performance measures, such as turnout times, new station placements, and resource allocations based on data. And again, their role is of an advisor, a voice from the community to us so we can make effective strategic decisions within fire rescue moving forward. It comes as no surprise to say that when, we are a very diverse city. What we are trying to accomplish is to capture information from every walk of life. So what we are requesting is a total of seven committee members within the noted skill sets to make this committee well-rounded. That is all for my presentation, and I am up for any questions you may have.
So is there any direction or anything you need from us to help with these efforts you've obviously put forward? I mean, what is it, what's the purpose of us hearing you out today, Deputy Chief?
So again, this, this was brought to me by the city manager, from actually Commissioner Glassman, and the intent is to create a, a voice, a sounding board from those in which we serve, from the various communities, to be able to continue to align what our vision is and what our strategic goals are. And obviously, fire, we have the subject matter experts, but we fail to recognize that we have a lot of experts that are right here in our backyard that may help us within those think tanks to be able to come up with future resolutions and initiatives.
So that think tank will work with you and be the lead on this, or would this other entity parallel itself, or try to, oftentimes, we're policymakers, and you all know, and I found out in the nine years I've been working here, that you all know the, the nuts and bolts and how things really work. If we need another fire station, then we're good at championing those type of events or, or subject matters. But if, 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 if you have this mechanism in place, I think it needs to be the lead, not omitting the think tank, because I think they're, they're just as important, but to share the facts and share how it really works to do these jobs that the men and women have trained to, to, to do these jobs, to be called professionals in, in this world. And so, and, and since I'm on this subject matters, want to thank you all for, you know, everything you've done for me and, and will do, and I will always be a, a part of first responders. And if there's anything you need from me in the future, I would, I would stand up, I would do anything it takes, because I've, I've realized the jobs you do, the danger, even as far as I've, I've gone in a live fire with you all. And that day, my, my perspective of first responders really changed. I mean, and the, and the time before that was, it was the 9/11, is when it brought me on my knees. But that day, you know, reality set in, and my hat's off to you all, Chief, Deputy Chief. Hopefully, one day you'll be my chief or this chief again, but you just don't know the gratitude I have, what you do and your expertise. So thank you for allowing me that moment, Mayor, but good luck, and thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any further questions?
Just a comment, Mayor, and I thank you so much for the presentation. And there was a reason that I did advocate that we have a committee such as this, because I really feel that, as you mentioned, we have also expertise in the community. And I know that many times, at my pre-agenda meetings with my district, I hear a lot about emergency response time. I hear about just so many issues that deal with what I hope this committee will be able to advise and to assist. And even just as another communication mechanism, I, I, I think it's going to work out really well. So I wanted to say thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Chief. I appreciate your always dedicated work. So Greg, would this come back to us as a resolution? What, what would, to form the?
Yeah, so if, if you like, the structure that was presented, seven-member body, we can certainly bring that back for commission approval. But certainly, there is an interest from the community to give feedback to how the performance of EMS personnel is doing their very critical role. And so we want to make sure that that voice is, is, is inclusive in our decisions, in our strategy development, and certainly will help us be in line with improving quality constantly.
Yep. And, and Greg, along those lines, another thing proud of we've done is move forward with substations to help, you mentioned Commissioner Glassman, the service times. Greg, just give us a little update. We've got one substation just off, south of the tunnel, just off Federal Highway, and then another substation just off La Solis. Can we get a little update how those are progressing?
Sure. I'd like to give Public Works Director Alan Dodd the floor if he can give us some updates on those.
No pressure.
Yeah, right.
Mayor and Commissioners, the EMS Substation 88 is going to be a, a prefab building. We're in the midst, working with procurement to boot together their procurement contract in order to go and buy it. But in the meantime, we're also doing a RFP in order to get a contract to accommodate, and they will have to do the, going to the site and preparing it to receive the trailer. So I think we're about six months away or so to doing the contract to get the, the building itself, and then probably a little bit longer than that to get the site ready.
Thanks. And then the other one?
You're talking about the fire EMS station that would be part of the unsolicited proposal?
Yep.
Yep. So the unsolicited proposal for the parking garage and the fire EMS station, we've been going through negotiations, business terms. We've got an initial draft of, of an agreement. We've got to convert it into a comprehensive agreement. So I think we probably have another 60 days at least of the legal review. I'd have to defer to the city attorney on that. And then once we would bring that back as a comprehensive agreement and it gets approved, the applicant's ready to submit the DRC documents to, to move that project forward.
Great. Okay. Thank you. Sounds good. Thanks, Mayor.
Okay, great.
Can I add to that?
Go ahead.
There's something that was brought to my attention, and I've mentioned it many times as a commissioner. And in my district, there's a lack of coverage. Not so much, so much that they can't cover it, but, and maybe, Chantel, you could speak to this. It's nothing negative, but there's an opportunity here, I think, because we, I think we still own the land at Ninth Avenue, just behind the plaza to the northwest. own the land at Ninth Avenue, just behind the plaza to the northwest. We tore down a fire station, if I believe. It was supposed to be a park. To me, it's just a overgrown piece of vegetation that sits in Dennis Olmer's entryway to his community. Are there any plans or could this be a plan to help, or is there a need? I heard there was, so-
For an EMS facility?
EMS or fire. And correct me, I don't-
I don't think fire, I don't think there's a budget for a fire station, but you know-
I have people in the room that, am I, okay, am I correct when saying this, or Chief, somebody help me out. Is there something that can be gained there?
Absolutely. I mean, we can never discourage adding resources to protect the community 100%. You know, we are fire rescue, so I know that we, you know, we continue to say EMS substations, but all of our paramedics, they're firefighters and also have firefighting gear to protect them, protective equipment. So 100%, we would never discourage, we, I'm not prepared today, but we can absolutely provide data to support the need for additional resources at that location, which was Station 46 at one point, and then it was moved northwest.
Right, and I understand it's still a little overlapping, I'm not, it's not negative comment, it's just, could there be an opportunity since the property still sits vacant?
Absolutely.
So Commissioner, just to add to the point, this group can certainly work on a project of that sort and also work hand-in-hand with the fire rescue department to do that level of analysis and come up also to determine not only the need, but also how this can be projected and planned into a CIP.
And so, and so maybe, it's a good point, someone from my district can sit in on that, and oftentimes, we don't get input from all four directions of the city, and this, this could be an added ingredient to, to this resolvement of what we think could make this better.
Chief Kerr, you want to add to that?
And Commissioner, I just wanted to note that the recommendation for this committee does include, five of the members are recommendations, one from each one of the districts and from the mayor. So it would be inclusive of each district.
I like it. Thank you.
And also, another good aspect of this is not so much to give the department neighborhood input, but also for the community to learn more about what our department does. So to have citizens, because when I was on the Citizen Police Review Board for a number of years, it was a great education to see what our police department is capable of doing and how it functions, and I think that would be a nice dividend for the creation of this particular committee. Bill, you wanted to speak? Mr. Brown? Thank you. Thank you, Chiefs.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor members of the Commission, Bill Brown, President of Central Beach and a resident of the barrier island. Several months ago, when we first started talking with Commissioner Glassman and back when Chris Walgerblum was city manager, this idea percolated. We met with Chief Kerr at her headquarters along with her staff and the representative of the union to start brainstorming. So this has been going on for several months of dialogue. I have to commend Chief Kerr and her mentorship of her leadership team internally for being allowed the opportunity to sit down, start brainstorming, looking at the future. There's a lot of positives that can come back from this. It's just not only for the EMS side, as you mentioned, Commissioner, about locations of firehouses and have community input and community feedback and going out and soliciting or sell, I shouldn't use the word soliciting, but talking to the community and getting support for replacements of fire stations should be based upon the recommendation of the fire rescue. The reason we put this not as a board but as an advisory committee is not to have governance over the fire department. That's the job of the city manager. So this board is to advise the community, also have feedback to advise the commission. Therefore, I'm standing here before you today and asking your approval to start moving forward with this and the support of this. I think great things can come from it. It's going to be an advisory board that could be proactive versus helping the fire department having been for many years reactive and also helping address and giving feedback to the budget advisory board on some of their needs of the fire rescue and also ocean rescue. Ocean rescue for many years has been neglected, but they are a vital part of the team of fire rescue for Fort Lauderdale. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Mr. Brown, Mr. Brown, I'm leaving. I want to thank you, I've observed you the time I've been here, you've always been proactive and not reactive, and I embrace this, especially knowing you're a part of-
You're going to miss us.
Miss Mr. Brown.
And that's why when we-
You didn't take me with you today.
We wanted it to be very clear-
Hey, I know, I'm going to find you and track you down, you're not that far away.
That each Commissioner and the mayor has an appointed representative on that board to have that conduit, because that's the conduit of the community between the HOAs within each Commissioner's district and the Commissioner's staff and the Commissioner. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brown.
Thank you for your work on this, Bill.
Okay, if there's nothing else, we'll move on to Business Five, which is Planned Development District Height Amendment. Mr. Wallo, can I ask you a question before we begin this discussion? And there are a few people signed up to speak. Is the city commission allowed, any member of this commission allowed to give an opinion about this item before it comes to us as an item to be voted on? Is it like quasi-judicial? Is it, I mean, are we allowed to go out in the community and give our opinions on this? Because I've been holding back for fear that I would be overstepping our ethical boundaries.
It wouldn't be so, it could possibly come as quasi-judicial. I mean, you can certainly, you're not prevented from speaking and having an opinion on it. You just can't necessarily be verbal as your predisposition, that it's an absolute no and an absolute yes. You can certainly speak of your opinion, but you should refrain from telegraphing what your decision will be until such time you hear all the evidence.
So you want us to walk that tight, bro?
Walk that tight. Well, you can have your opinion now, but keeping in mind that there will be a process in the future where you're going to hear additional information, and you should reserve your judgment for that time.
Okay.
Mayor, I agree with your concern, it was something I was also going to mention, but, you know, as I look at this, and I've read all of the emails from individual citizens and also from neighborhood associations, and I actually attended a vote at the Central Beach Alliance membership as well. But you know, in looking at this in its totality, and again, this is nothing against the current commission, but this is really going to affect the new commission, and I think that this is something that really needs to wait. I don't think everything always has to wait till the next commission, but in my opinion, this is just something, a discussion that we should have after we know next Tuesday who the three people are elected. I just, I just feel that way, I just think that-
We're not voting on this.
No, I understand. But I don't, I think even the discussion, getting into the depth, I just think that it so affects folks that are going to be sitting here in two weeks, that's all. That's just something that I'm thinking of.
All right. Well, the thing is, it obviously was put on the conference agenda for discussion. Staff had provided a backup as well as exhibits, which contained a lot of letters and emails sent to the city, giving their opinions. Most of those opinions were not in favor of changing the laws the way it is today, but we have a few people who've signed up to speak, so let's hear what the community has to say.
Well, and Mayor, if I could, I mean, part of what we asked city manager to do with this was, please go to the community, engage with the community, HOAs, leaders, neighbors, to better understand, you know, their thoughts and feedback and so forth. And so I think that's why this is so important, to get this, to be able to disseminate it out, digest it, and to Commissioner Glassman's point, I think now that you have this, you know, that you can, you know, continue the conversation, but I don't think it makes a whole lot of sense doing anything more than, before the new commission is seated.
So Chris, do you want, did you want to give a short talk before we invite people to come up to speak?
Sure, I can, I'm prepared to give a summary of the effort and some of the results-
That'll be good, thank you.
Yeah, that'd be good.
Great. So Chris Cooper, Director of Development Services Department. So back in June, the commission directed staff to go out to the public, as was mentioned, and conduct some outreach on whether or not there was any interest and thoughts on increasing the maximum height allowed for the Planned Development District. So we began that effort with an email to all of our recognized civic associations as well as the Council of Fort Lauderdale Civic Associations, and in that email, we provided an overview of the request and offered to make a presentation if any of those groups were interested. Seven civic associations and the council all took us up on that request and received a presentation, and each of those groups responded with their position on the request, which was included in the backup of the memo that you received. The presentation that staff gave, we included a historical overview of the PDD ordinance, including all the prior iterations, the PUD, the ID. We summarized the minimum requirements requested PDD as well as design-related requirements. Those include things like the minimum development size, height, floor area ratio, density, review of neighborhood compatibility and adequacy. And we concluded that presentation with a request for input on the proposed height increase and a position to be provided to us that we could give to you as feedback. So we did hear some common themes and common comments. Some of the things were general, whether they were for or against, but we did hear some common themes. Some of those in support mentioned that the added height would allow for better use of development sites. Some examples given were smaller building footprints and the opportunity for more open space. Also, some said that the height with less commercial and more residential in that density would reduce traffic in the area. From those opposed, we heard things like concerns for impacts to infrastructure, additional traffic, neighborhood compatibility concerns, for example, you know, the buildings being out of character with the surrounding community, the shadows the buildings may cast, privacy of those areas around it that are of lower height levels, and just in general, being out of context with the surrounding community. So really, at this point, what we're asking the commission is whether or not you'd like us to embark on a more formal process to start crafting an amendment to the PDD to incorporate that change or some iteration of that change that could include things like additional requirements or conditions for approval.
So, so again, tell us, what is the benefit of wanting to raise the height limit on the, on the city's ordinance?
So the height in the PD is currently capped at an additional 125% of the zoning district that is subject to the PDD rezoning with a max of 500 feet. So the request was if we, to change that to allow for an additional height to be considered up to 500 feet.
Right. And what is the, how does the city benefit? How does the city benefit from having the taller building height?
So it's really a project-specific question. So, you know, it would depend on the context of the project being proposed, the surrounding area, the size of the development site, you know, and those types of factors that we generally consider when we review a development. It's difficult to say generally what that benefit would be, because it really, and what this ordinance is for is to allow for more unique development that may, may benefit from a deviation such as that, for that allowance.
So, so explain to me, if you could, how does, regardless of taking almost every typical development site, how does height, another 200 feet of height, regardless of the site plan that would be proposed, is height in and of itself a benefit to a development site?
I mean, that would really be up to the applicant to justify what, you know, what the benefit is for that additional height.
But does your department have an opinion on that?
No, because it's, like I said, it's difficult to do outside of the context of a project. So you had Saline, the 3,000 Alhambra project on the beach, for example, that went up to 300 feet, because that's the max, but the justification and the benefit to their surrounding community was that by allowing that height through the PDD, you could create a more slender tower, which would maintain views, cast less shadows, things of that nature. So that was the benefit that was justified in that project. It could be the same for a project requesting up to 500 feet, but, you know, it could be justified in a number of ways.
Okay. Okay, there are a few people, thank you.
So, I concur with the others, and that'll give the community a chance too to go back, you know, and wrap their heads around this. If I was here to accept the consequences that come along with my voting, I would be comfortable doing that. I think we allow those three people, along with the institutional knowledge that we leave behind, the opportunity to ride this ship.
Okay. All right, we have a few people signed up to speak. Thank you, Chris. Bill Brown, followed by Fred Nesbit, followed by Len Abrams. I'll give you two minutes, if you can do your comments in two minutes, that'll be helpful.
Bill Brown, President of Central Beach Alliance. As Commissioner Glassman alluded to, he was in attendance at the meeting. It was very clear from a vote of 208 totally opposed to any increase in the current ordinance as it relates to PDDs, and only three in favor. I would also like to point out that there was a presentation given to the Council of Civic Associations, and not all neighborhoods have had the opportunity to vote on this, but we are totally against any change in the ordinance, and we will stand with all our other neighborhood associations to voice the same concerns that are opposed to it as well. So I don't know where it's going to go from here, from, since this is a conference meeting and a new commission is coming on, but we would ask that you not change the ordinance as, and let it stay as it's currently written. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Fred Nesbit, nice to see you, Fred. Len Abrams, followed by Perry Sclafani.
I'm Fred Nesbit, representing the Galt Mop Community Association. We represent 33 high-rise buildings. We have no single-family homes, we're kind of unique, and most of our members are riding along the ocean. We discussed this in our advisory board meeting, which represents all the associations, and the vote was unanimous to oppose this. Part of our concern is, we love Fort Lauderdale the way it is. I mean, it's a beautiful, diverse city with all kinds of facilities, and Mayor, in your State of the City speech, you were so eloquent, you said, "Once someone visits Fort Lauderdale, they don't want to leave." And my husband and I are an example of that. And also, as a trustee of the cemetery board, we can help you with that, you don't ever leave Fort Lauderdale.
Thank you for sharing that.
But, so we love the green space, we love the variation, we love going through Victoria Park, Point Santa Heise, and we would not want to see buildings like that. We would not want to see along the ocean, a whole string of 500-foot-high buildings that would actually block the view of the ocean. The other concern we have is, some of our buildings are fairly small. Our buildings range in size from 24 units to 400 units. So if you take a building that's maybe 130 units, it may be wise for a developer to come in and buy it out and then try to build a 500-story building. So it's going to put a lot of pressure on our buildings where we have a lot of seniors living who may not want to move, and if they are forced to move, where are they going to move to? So it becomes a dilemma. So we are adamantly opposed to it. We understand the downtown section, that's a unique situation, but as far as making the height limit to citywide, we are adamantly opposed to it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Len Abrams, followed by Perry Sclafani, followed by Mary Pellequin.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners. I'm Len Abrams, I'm Director of Points of America Two and Vice President of the Combined Board of Directors of Point One and Two. We are a condominium association with approximately 580 units and approximately 2,000 owners. We are on record as opposing the change to the PDD for many reasons, which is part of the presentation on page 19 of page 55, so I won't repeat myself. I had a long dissertation, but my main purpose today was to come up and ask that no votes or anything be done and be, let the new commission that's coming on take on this project. And thank you, Mr. Glassman, for making that recommendation, I totally concur. We will all then have an ample time to prepare more information for this commission and the new commission. On a personal note, I would like to thank Ben. He has been tremendous for our community, and Godspeed, Ben, and thank you for all your help.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Sclafani?
Yes.
Yes, hi. Followed by Mary Pellequin, followed by Jackie Scott. Good afternoon.
Hello, Mayor and Commissioners. I'm Perry Sclafani, President of W. Bermuda Rivera Homeowners Association. We're a- We're a community of 253 single-family homes located between Oakland Park Boulevard and Commercial Boulevard, right off of A1A. We received the city's request for feedback regarding the height increase, and we did review the PowerPoint presentation at a board meeting, and six of our seven board members voted opposed to the height increase. In addition to that, we polled our 253 homeowners to find out what they wanted in regards to this PDD. And it was an overwhelming majority of the people voted no regarding the possible change into the ordinance. There was, I think, two or three that were in favor of, and probably over 94% that opposed it. So, on behalf of the 253 homeowners and households in Bermuda Rivera, we strongly feel that the current 300-foot maximum for any PDD project must be adhered to as written in the current zoning ordinance. So, in summary, the residents of Bermuda Rivera opposed the suggestion to increase, and we hope that if a vote comes up, that you will also oppose it. Thank you.
Great, thank you, sir. Mary, followed by Jackie Scott, followed by Steve Gannon.
Hi, good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners. I'm Mary Pellequin. I'm the President of the Council of Fort Lauderdale Civic Associations. The council just recently, in the last meeting in October, had the presentation about the change in the height ordinance. Council was very busy in August and September, holding candidate forums, so we just had it then. The council is comprised of 50 civic associations throughout districts one, two, and three, and four, all four of them. And there were many associations that had not had the presentation. It was kind of news to them. But as you know, you've had the letters right there, there are several civic associations that had and had written letters and had stood up and spoke against the change in the ordinance. I assume, or I figure, at our next meeting, which is November 9th, the day after the election, actually right here in this building, that the council will vote one way or the other on that ordinance. So, I'm not sure of the outcome, but I can kind of guess. On a personal note, not speaking for the council, but speaking for myself as a resident of Fort Lauderdale, I like tall, skinny buildings, because I think that they leave a lot of room at the bottom, and a lot of space at the bottom. I like tall, skinny buildings. I like tall, skinny, a lot of things. I wish I was tall and skinny. I'm married to a tall, skinny man. However, these buildings like this, you know, they have their place, and they are not in the neighborhoods. They're not across your neighborhood, Mayor, Lake Melba. There could be one there, the Galleria, the Galt, all these different neighborhoods. You put a 500-foot building in the middle of a neighborhood like that, all those backyards lose their privacy. They're just open to whoever's in those buildings. One more thing I want to know, I don't need to know it now, but I need to personally be educated on how something like this gets legs like this. Because this was presented all over the city. A lot of these meetings had many, many people. I know the Central Beach had over 200 people. We have 50 people in Coral Ridge. All kinds of people were involved in listening to this and discussions and letters being written. I'm just, would like to know one day, don't need to know now, how a subject that seems so out of whack with what we're doing gets legs like this, where it's presented by a...
Well, this came about as a result of a developer that was seeking a height variance, and therefore was presented to the commission, which we then asked staff to give us an idea, let us understand how it would fit into the existing development code. And that was what today's item was about, coming back, reporting back to the commission, telling us, number one, how it could be integrated in the existing code, what is the neighborhood feedback on it, and should there be any further action taken on this item if the commission decides to go forward? So, it started as a result of a request by a developer.
Okay, all right. Good to know. All right, thank you.
Jackie Scott is in the house.
Good afternoon. Jackie Scott here. I want to speak first on behalf of the Kohlhamick Homeowner Association. We did have the presentation by staff, who incidentally did a great job. They had quite a few presentations they had to make around the city, and we appreciate it. But we do not support the change in the ordinance. And I hope, based on what Commissioner Glassman, I believe, also Commissioner Sorenson said, you will allow the new commission to make a decision as to what we should do with this ordinance. I'd also like to point out that the PUD ordinance has morphed over the last 10, 15 years. It seems like every time there's a new project, we look at how we can change the PDD, or whatever we're calling it these days, to match the project. And that's really no way to plan a city, in my opinion. So, I hope that you will lead this to the next commission, and thank you very much.
You're very welcome. Thank you. Steve, hey, Steve Gannon, followed by Lisa Malcolm, followed by Joanne Robinson.
Thank you. Steve Gannon, President of Lauderdale Beach Homeowners Association. We sent out a poll to members with the presentation included and a little explanation, asking them to weigh in on it, not swaying either way, and we got unanimous against it. No, virtually no one, none of the responses we got were in favor. I held the emails, we didn't send them emails, and we sent the tabulations to city staff and whatnot, didn't want to inundate everyone. But the feedback we got were items like, not outside of the downtown, don't do this here, never on the barrier island, shadow the intercoastal, shadow the beach, dead city, we can't handle it, all that stuff. So, definitely vehemently against it, and on the barrier island, and the suggestion was keep it downtown where it belongs. And also, I agree, pass it on, thank you, Commissioner Glassman, the next commission should hear it, and they should really hear what we're talking about, too. So, we shouldn't do too much discussion before the new folks are on the dais. Thank you.
Thank you. Lisa Malcolm, followed by Joanne Robinson, followed by Miranda Lopez.
Please, I ask if I could go first.
Go ahead, sure.
Mayor, Commissioner, city officials, and city employees, Joanne Robinson, I'm here representing the Harbor Inlet Association, of which I am the president. Before I start to speak, I would like to take a second to thank the city staff, in particular Ella Parker and Jim Hetzel, who have been extremely supportive and professional throughout this process, really with giving information to us, responding to our many requests, and listening to the many complaints. So, thank you for putting that process in place. I think it worked really well. Being the neighborhood for which the request from a developer will be most affected, we are adamantly opposed to 484-foot towers right next to our low-rise residential neighborhood. The commission knows this, they've been deluged with letters from us, our board, other boards in the area. It is just not appropriate. We are happy to have 500-foot buildings downtown, that's where they belong. We just do not feel they belong at the corner of our little entrance gatehouse, which, by the way, is a one-story, and will be next to these. So, talk about compatibility. There are many other issues with this, we've brought them up. I don't want to go and repeat everything we've said in countless letters, you're probably sick of seeing them, but just that, there is no support. We held a neighborhood meeting, about 100 people showed up, a record for our community, and where they were 100% against it. So, we see no support in our neighborhood, or frankly, anywhere in the city, and our recommendation would be, just stop it now and let the city resources be used for something else. If not, we agree with Commissioner Glassman, please let the next commission take it up. And I'd also like to add our thanks to Commissioner Sorenson for all he's done for us and our neighborhood in the past, what is it, six years now? Six, four, yes.
It seems like six.
Four and a half, four and a half.
Four and a half.
Seems like 10 up here.
Thank you, Joanne. It's great working with you. Thank you.
Thank you, Joanne. Lisa, you want to come up now? Followed by Miranda Lopez, followed by Brian Donaldson.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, Mayor. I just wanted to speak against the height increase to 500 feet. It would be 480 in Harbor Inlet due to the airport height restrictions, so that even gives you a clue that it's way too high. I did want to jump off what Mary just said, too, and how does it get legs? And I don't even think it needs legs even after the next commission, so I just think it's obviously opposed all over the city, and that it shouldn't even be brought up again. The developers knew the height restriction when they bought the property, and I don't think that we should just keep going back every little thing they ask to bring up, because it's very stressful. And it's stressful for all of you, too. I also, too, with the firefighters being here, too, it is a pretty gridlock on the beach to get up and down, and just more construction would add to their stress level, too, and to people's lives and safety getting up and down the beach. And the only other thing I wanted to say, Joanne covered everything, so I just think we should just cut the legs off and not even bring it up again. Thank you, Ben, for everything for our district, and who else?
That's it.
Thank you, thank you, I appreciate it.
They're already gone.
Give the family my best.
Mackenzie may be in the hallway, you could thank him, too.
Bye-bye.
Appreciate you, Jack, my best.
Miranda Lopez, followed by Brian Donaldson, followed by Chris Williams.
Good afternoon. A few members of the city commission that we are having right now. I am Miranda Lopez, back to the podium, and even if I am a member of the Offin Islands, and our general meeting is going to be at the end of November, then we didn't, were not able to get our opinion. But speaking with the people around the city, there is a general consensus that opposition to have that type of height for the PDD. You have to, number one, you have to take into account, the PDD can be placed in any zoning around the city. And if you are going to allow to raise the heights of the PDD so much, they are going to destroy the characters of the big surrounding areas. That I consider an odd negative, the other odd negative aspects of the change in the heights of the building have been already exposed, and one of the things that really affects me is the lack of privacy for the surrounding areas. I'm not going to be able to do what I please in my backyard, for example. The other thing, if you want to allow high-rise buildings like that, I am not against that. You have downtown Fort Lauderdale work with them, and also, you can choose other area on the city, like uptown, and allow that area to have high rises, but please do not spread all of them around the city. Keep the character of each of our areas. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Miranda. Brian Donaldson, followed by...
Can I get something more? Now that we are so conscious regarding the old impacts of the changes of environment and to conserve energy and so on, I am curious about how much energy demands a building, a high-rise building. For example, if you have a three-story building and use the elevators, it's a short time. But if you have a building that is 500 feet, the elevator is going to take a lot more of time, more time, that means more energy. And the same thing to raise the water and everything. I would like a study, the impact of the, that impact on the environment. Thank you very much.
All righty, very good, thank you. Brian Donaldson, followed by Chris Williams, followed by Dr. Warren Sturman.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Commissioners. I'm Brian Donaldson. I'm the President of the Birch Park Beach HOA. I've really not seen such an item come before all the different HOAs and have such a consensus. My phone was blowing up when this first came out in June from other HOA presidents, et cetera. We waited to see the presentations from city staff, which, again, were excellent. My board voted unanimously against any type of revision going from 300 feet max to 500 feet. We then submitted it to, I needed board approval to send out a official vote to the neighborhood. There was 93% opposed. There was no in favor. The other 7% didn't respond, but we were overwhelmingly against even bringing it up further. So, I guess one of my questions is, or one of my opinion would be, at this point, I mean, from hearing from Central Beach Alliance, from Bermuda Rivera, from all of these different groups, it seems like the feedback that you were asking for from neighborhoods is overwhelmingly against going and revising something from 300 to 500. So, even though when we're going to have a new commission next week, I don't see a reason...
Two weeks, two weeks.
Or, well, the majority will be a new team next week, and which I look forward, as a budget chair, to be working with the new team and the two of you. I think that we probably don't even need to waste the time of city staff to start to put together an amendment that you would then vote on, when what you asked for was the feedback of the citizens. And the citizens have been speaking very clearly today, as all the other HOA presidents have, that they are not interested in doing a revision of 300 to 500, keep the 500 to the downtown center core, and not allow it to go throughout the city. But that's my point. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Chris, Chris Williams, how are you, Chris? Followed by Dr. Warren Sturman, and the last one I have is Mary Furtick. Hi, Chris.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioner. My name's Chris Williams, I'm the President of the Coral Ridge Association. So, we first got noticed in June about this, which, when I first saw the letter from allies, and wow, 67% increase already on a 300-foot height, that's pretty tremendous. So, when talking to a bunch of the other HOA presidents in our neighborhood, you know, our initial reaction was, that's just way too high. But, we did go through the presentations with Jim, and I saw it myself twice, through the council and through the association. And one good thing about the process you guys laid out, we've had four months to talk to our residents about it, and a lot of that was education, too. So, a lot of people didn't understand what a PDD was, so that, instead of just getting real quick feedback in two, three, four weeks, and then voting on it, you guys gave us an opportunity to really educate our residents. And I think probably everybody else might think the same thing, that we got a lot of engagement. So, it gave us an opportunity to get feedback, which, of course, was all negative, and our board did vote on it. We have a 17-member board, and we took the stance that we're not in favor of the increase to 500 feet, and we provided written documentation for that. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Sturman, followed by Mary Furtick. How are you, Warren?
Hey. Mayor, Commissioners, I'll be very brief. Two quick things. My thank you. Number one, of all the neighborhoods that I've been to, all the neighborhoods, the sentiment has been universally against any changes, number one. Number two, I agree with Commissioner Glassman, please, gentlemen, please, out of respect to the community, put off any further discussion until the next commission's seated. Thank you very much.
Good afternoon. Ann Helmer's actually been representing our neighborhood on this, but she could not be here, so I came to tell you that on September 29th, we passed a motion unanimously to oppose the change to the ordinance and the increase to 500 feet. I'm just going, that's on behalf of my neighborhood, I just want to step back. I know Jackie spoke earlier. It wasn't, many years ago, we decided to, that the PDD ordinance needed to be rewritten. I think my neighborhood was the first one to actually come forward with a motion, and maybe hers was second, but it might be disputed. So, in any event, they formed a task force, I was on that task force subsequently, they formed a second... formed a second task force to amend the ID ordinance, which was the, which followed the PDD ordinance. And then that, out of that came the PDD ordinance, if you can follow all of these ordinances on, on land developments.
We keep you guessing there, we keep you guessing.
Well, it's been just three years and I think when we actually recommended as a task force was less height than when it actually came through in the final version. So every other time this ordinance has been, has been rewritten, it's gone to this task force of which is a very balanced group of people, I think I mentioned this earlier. And this time, it just seemed to come forward on one issue, one, one section of the ordinance as opposed to the entire ordinance. I'm sorry, I was doing pickup from school, so I was listening on the phone and I heard that Commissioner Glassman has suggested deferring this item, so I think that's a good idea. But I'd also just like to throw in there, you've gotten a lot of community input, I don't know that you've analyzed the ordinance as a whole, it just seems like there's this focus on one thing and as I said, my neighborhood has voted unanimously to oppose that, thank you.
Thank you Mary. Anyone else wish to speak on this item?
Mayor, just, Mayor, I'm sorry, Alan Waller, City Attorney, I just wanted to clarify my response to your question earlier.
Yeah.
Because that wasn't clear. So to the extent that it's a legislative, to the extent that it's strictly a change of the ordinance in a vacuum, basically it's legislative, so you can discuss your opinions on it, no problem. To the extent that it's discussed in the context of a particular project, which we know this promulgated from a request from a particular developer, then that would be more quasi-judicial and you wouldn't want to say anything definitive on that, but as to the aspect of it being strictly legislative on the ordinance, you can.
Okay, well, just hearing this and reading all the backup and everything, I'm not sure there's much of an appetite to go forward. I personally wouldn't want to waste any more city resources on this because it just seems to me like this is not really appropriate for our city. Do I get a concurrence on that?
Yep, I agree.
Yeah.
Yes.
So I want to thank staff for doing all the outreach and spending the, thank you so much. And I'll, I'll tell you why, super why that's important, because you know, hearing back from the community, not just on this, but I'm sure staff heard about a lot of other things in the process and, and I think that, you know, we need to continue to respond to the community expectations and I know this commission tries to do its best in that regard. This, the, the particular developer that, in Pier 66, that had requested this inquiry, you know, will continue to come back and I, I would hope that the community will continue to be engaged in the process. I want to thank Joanne in your neighborhood for being, you're in the front, it's right in your front yard there, so I know that, I know you're on top of this and thank you for taking the time. It's all volunteer stuff and you know, I know it gets aggravating sometimes, but you really are very helpful to us in trying to do the right thing for our community, so thank you so much, Mayor.
Mayor, and we unified the city.
I'm sorry?
We unified the city. It's a man's thing, a founder. We unified the city.
Brought it together.
Wow. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Okay, moving on, so that's it with planned business, so we're just going to do the commission reports and I see we don't have anyone from Commissioner, Commission District One or Three, how about Two?
How about Two?
Thank you everybody for being here this afternoon, I appreciate taking-
Thank you all.
Thank you. All right, thank you Mayor, I'll go through this really quickly. Wednesday, October 19th, we did have Flagler Village Civic Association, on Thursday, the 20th, a great press conference at NSU Museum of Art on the economic impact of the arts, a study that the city is going to be entering in with Broward County and specifically also spearheaded by the Broward County Cultural Division. That evening, Lakewood Civic Association meeting at Artserv, as well as the Central Beach Alliance meeting at the Ritz-Carlton. Friday, October 21th, Mayor, it was great to join you at the DiVale Festival at the La Solas Oceanside Park, that was a wonderful celebration. The 25th, congratulations Barbie Pearson for the artist reception at City Hall, if you haven't taken notice folks, her artwork is still hanging out in the lobby. That's a great program where we recognize local artists and very appreciative of staff putting that together. Mayor, I also joined you at the Celebration of Life for David Parker, a past president of the Sable Open Civic Association, a very active historic preservationist and served on our historical preservation board as well. Also that evening, I attended the Circuit Launch Party at the Patio Pizza Bar and Grill, great location and also I'm hearing great things about people who have experienced Circuit, door-to-door service, it's complimentary and I'm hearing really good things about it, for people that haven't checked it out, please do so. That evening also was the South Middle River Civic Association meeting. Wednesday, the Fuller International Boat Show opened and we were all at City Hall, I'm sorry, at the Convention Center for the ribbon cutting. Also that afternoon was the Global Business Luncheon, always a very fascinating topic. And Mayor, congratulations on the Super Yacht Soiree with the other sponsors, that was a really nice evening. And that evening also, folks from my staff attended the Middle River Terrace Association meeting, because I was with you at your soiree Mayor, so I couldn't attend that. Thursday, October 27th, I just bopped around to a lot of different events during the boat show, it was so exciting to hear all the comments from folks all around the world. Congratulations to Dennison and Holman and Hout Living and Fraser Yachts and also that evening, Vice Mayor, we attended the West Marine Ribbon Cutting, that's a great new headquarters moving here from California.
Are they going to call it East Marine now?
Well, let me think, is it on the, is it on the west side of Broward? East, north, south, it's on the south side of-
It's on south, yeah.
North side, no, north side of Broward.
North, yeah.
Northwest.
Northeast.
Northeast.
Think just northeast.
Alright, I guess they'll have-
So it could fit.
You can work on that Mayor, but anyway, welcome to West Marine, that's a huge company, I think their largest retail store actually is already in Fort Lauderdale, but they do, they're huge in terms of supplying boaters and folks that fish, welcome to the, to the city. Saturday, October 29th, again, thank you to staff and to all of the neighborhoods and folks that volunteered and make a difference day. Last night obviously was Halloween, coming up on the 3rd, Victoria Park Civic Association meeting. I'm going to host a meeting with Transportation and Mobility Department on the proposed East La Solas Crosswalks, that came out of the La Solas Mobility Working Group, but that's something that came up and we're going to look at those design ideas. Also Wednesday, November 3rd, I'll be attending the GLBX Ally Awards at the Galleria Mall and I wanted to thank those folks for the honor of the Visionary Award, so thank you. Friday, November 4th, Simone Biles will be in town, I'll be attending the christening of the brand-new ship from Celebrity Cruises. Tonight, we're going to do a proclamation and welcoming them to our city. Also Mayor, I believe you'll be doing a proclamation that night for Gail Butler, who I guess is leaving in her role over at the Friends of Birch Park. Saturday, November 5th, we have a Shade and Art Gateway Project that I'll be attending and then Monday, Christiana Lilly is doing a book launch. I love the title of her launch, of her book, she'll be doing it at the Fort Lauderdale Historical Society. The name of her book is 100 Things to Do in Fort Lauderdale Before You Die, so-
That included going to a city commission meeting?
I don't know, but, I don't know, but quite a title, huh? Then obviously November 8th, Election Day, good luck to everyone that's running and it's a grueling process and I so respect everyone that goes through that. Also on the 9th, we have Sable Open Civic Association meeting and International Swimming Hall of Fame Board meeting and then all the light-ups start, so also History Fort Lauderdale is honoring Ted Drum on November 10th. And I did have one comment that I thought maybe we could look at, the calendar for next, for 2023, we actually are scheduling a commission meeting on Wednesday, July 5th, the day after the holiday, maybe we can contemplate doing it the day before the holiday and then just have the holiday and we're done?
A lot of people take that whole weekend off.
The whole weekend off?
Yeah.
Well, maybe the next commission can talk about it.
Yeah.
I'll bring it up again.
You do that.
I'm not getting any traction with you, so I'll bring it up again at the next, the next commission, okay? And then before I close, I did want to just say thank you, thank you for your service, Vice Mayor Sorensen, Commissioner Mackenzie, Commissioner Moritas, wish you all the best and thank you for everything that you've done and that we've done as a team, I'm very appreciative of all of your work, so thank you for that and for representing your constituents so well. Also today, I would be remiss if I didn't say happy 30th birthday to my District Two Outreach Coordinator, Ashley Casacito is 30 years old today. I told her that my left side is older than her whole body, so have a great time and whatever, but 30 years old, do you remember 30?
It's a blur, it's a blur.
Okay, happy birthday, that's it Mayor.
Vice Mayor?
Thanks Mayor, appreciate it, yeah, just fantastic boat show to all Informa and everyone involved, that it just went fantastic. I think it was the biggest boat show yet in terms of number of presenters and economic impact, so just fantastic there all around. As, as was mentioned, Veterans Day coming up a week from Friday, so you know, please come out and support veterans and those ceremonies. Commissioner Glass, Simone Biles is going to be in town, I'm a big fan, what's, what's this, what's this for?
The 19 million time Olympian-
Right.
I didn't hear what he said.
Simone Biles, the-
She's going to be the, I guess they call it the, when they have a ship and a christening.
Christ, oh, she's here for the christening.
Godmother, isn't it?
Oh, yeah, yeah, sure.
Someone who's the godmother of the ship, a brand-new ship.
The sponsor, the-
So she's going to be the, the godmother of the ship.
Okay, oh great, and that's November 4th?
Yes.
Okay, great.
Maybe name a street after it or something.
That's, that's wonderful, she's amazing. Great, and then, yeah, no, that's all I have and just, yeah, thank you very much to all of you for serving together and working together.
You're going to show up tonight, I hope.
I'm going to be there tonight, so, but if I don't get a chance then, I just wanted to say, it's been awesome working together.
Will butt in.
Will butt in, I don't know, but, and I look forward to just continuing to work together, I'm not, not leaving, I'll still be right here and looking forward to working together with you all in the community, so thank you, thanks Mayor.
Thank you Vice Mayor. Commissioner, do you have any, you want to?
I'm just going to stick with my tradition of no report, but I would like to say-
Okay.
Thank you to staff, thank you to the city of Fort Lauderdale, thank you to the residents for all the love and support and two of my favorites, fire and police, thank you for all your support and it's been a great, great run and I'll be looking down from across the street to keep my eye on this wonderful city that I love so much and will always cherish, so with that, all I can say is just thank you, thank you so much, thank you for all that you have done for me and for this city.
And we look forward to continuing to work with you as, as our liaison to the county, this will be the first time in a very long time we've had a representation from the city of Fort Lauderdale on the county commission, so this is important to us, so thank you.
And I see my good brother Ralph Stone in the audience.
Okay, I have just a few things I'd like to acknowledge, I attended the Winterfest Boat Parade Launch Party, which took place last weekend, great turnout, it was basically an event to recognize the sponsors and it was a wonderful success and I think it bodes well for the, for the entire Winterfest season that we are looking forward to every year in the city. So thank you Lisa for all the work that you do. Also participated with Commissioner Glassman on going to the Celebration of Life for Dave Parker, Dave was just an amazing guy, always very supportive and always a smile on his face, so he's definitely a tremendous loss for our community and, and so he will be missed. I also attended the opening of Hoff's House of Sweets on La Solas, definitely is a place to go to, it's amazing assortment of candy and, and just, it's a wonderful addition to the La Solas Boulevard.
How much did you eat?
I had one piece. They had chocolate-covered potato chips, how can you say no to that?
I've been out with you and I know you eat more than-
I participated in the ribbon cutting of the Ferretti Yachts showroom expansion on 15th Street here in Fort Lauderdale, amazing showroom, in-water yachts right inside their building, they had, they had a tremendous display at the yacht show and really a wonderful organization that has invested quite a bit in our city, so it was wonderful to participate in the expansion of that showroom. I also participated in the launch party at Bonnet House for the Edition Residences that are going to take place, they're going to have groundbreaking soon, this is over on Bay Shore Drive, there'd be two mid-sized towers that are going to be built there and they're going to be branded the Edition. I also was at the Guy Harvey Store on La Solas and this was an open house that he had with regard to the Fort Lauderdale International Boat Show, Mr. Guy Harvey was there himself and we appreciate his investment in our community and the work that he does on behalf of saving the oceans and the marine wildlife. On the 26th, we went to the actual ribbon cutting of the, of the boat show, oddly at the Convention Center, we'll talk about that some other time, the new commission, we'll talk about that, and, and, but it was a great event, showcased a significant amount of marine-related products and services that were housed at the Convention Center this year and, and so it was great to see the folks from Monaco, the, the Mayor of Monaco attended, as well as the Secretary General, which is like the director of the Monaco Yacht Club was here, he said he hadn't been here in 20 years and he couldn't believe how much it had changed, so he really was appreciative to be invited and, and I know they'll be That evening, we had the mayor's reception, to which Commissioner Glassman referred to and again, another wonderful success that the Marine Industries Association and Informa put on to, to kick off an amazing event, which was the largest boat show I think this city has experienced. I did get to go as, as a spectator on Sunday and just, just amazing, amazing how that continues to turn out, so many people and recognizing it as such a signature event here in our city. Over $1.8 billion of economic impact is estimated, that is resulting from this boat show, so we're very proud of having that in our city and, and I know this commission has always been committed to working with the, the folks connected to the boat show to make sure it's a success year after year. The following day, I, I gave opening remarks to our sister city Gold Coast, they were having a marine industry breakfast over at the Bahia Mar and quite a few people from Australia did participate in that breakfast and we appreciate their coming to this side of the world to be part of our boat show. A few days ago, I was part of a panel discussion regarding the legal aspects, it was a continuing legal education program on the, the two pieces of legislation often known as the anti-woke bill, as well as the Don't Say Gay bill, a local law firm put that on and it was, it was attended by over 200 participants to learn about what the law says and how it's, how its impact is going to be on commercial investment in our, in our community. And then this last Saturday, I participated in the Make a Difference Day, quite a few people from the community came out and I was at Providence Park at, in the first part of the morning and then I went over to Middle River Terrace, which I believe is District Two, and did a neighborhood walk along with, I can't think of the name of the pet organization, what's the name of the pet organization? What is that?
I'm sorry, what agency are you looking for?
Anyway, I can't remember the name of the-
Humane Society.
What is it?
Humane Society?
No, 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 Larry Wallenstein's organization.
Oh yeah, yeah.
I can't think of the name, anyway, again, it was to highlight the need to find homes for abandoned pets and it was a great way to also showcase the great things that are happening in that neighborhood. On November 2nd, I'll be speaking at the Neighborhood Leadership Academy at 6:00 PM at George English Park and then the Moss family is having an office opening at 6:30 that same day at 1200 East La Solas Boulevard. I want to congratulate Commissioner Glassman, who's going to be recognized, being honored by the, the Chamber, the GLBX Chamber of Commerce Ally Awards, congratulations, that'll be at the Galleria on November 3rd.
Thank you.
And then the next day, November 4th, I want to congratulate our own pastor, Ron Perkins, who is going to be honored- who is going to be honored at a prayer breakfast right down the street at the Global Events Center. Ron has always been an important figure in our community. He's always been a friend, and it's a long time coming in recognizing Ron. He's a great guy, so congratulations, Ron. November 4th, that same day, I will be part of a special Olympic ceremony at Bennett Elementary School. On November 5th, we're doing the dedication at Holiday Park of the Bill Joyner Field. That's at noon on November 5th. November 7th, a book launch that Commissioner Glassman referred to, Cristiana Lilly, "100 Things to Do in Fort Lauderdale Before I Die." I started reading it. It's very interesting. I'm sure, you know, I mean, we've done most of them.
What number are you up to? Don't rush that book.
24.
Okay.
Let's see. Did you mention the history makers for the Historical Society? Yes, I thought you did. So November 10th, we are going to be visited by the Germany soccer team, who is going to play up against our US women's soccer team. That's at 7:00 PM at Drive Pink Stadium. It's going to be an amazing event. Women's soccer is too often overlooked, and we have a tremendous team here in the US, so really looking forward to that event. Again, US soccer, women's US soccer versus Germany. November 12th, Historic Marker Designation at Safe Harbor Lauderdale Marine Center. That's at 11:00 AM. And then on the 15th, I invite everybody to come to Commission Chambers, and we're going to have the swearing-in of the new commissioners at 11:00 AM that day. So... I guess that's it. Mr. City Manager, do you have a report?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor and Vice Mayor and Commissioner. So this past Friday, I participated in the Broward Workshop, provided updates of our effort with the county and working jointly to further define the local preferred alternative for the river crossing. Shared with them efforts made so far in our approach to use a consultant with the MPO to determine how the tunnel is the best local preferred alternative. We also shared the concurrent effort as well of submitting for the reconnecting communities. This is a grant that we're seeking, that we intend to use the funding to determine further how the tunnel alternative provides greater social, economic, and environmental benefits for the downtown core. So that's being considered right now by our Transportation Department, and hopefully we should get that answer by January. Wanted to also give an update about the police headquarters. Right now, we received, as you know, an estimate for the build, and we did an audit on that cost estimate. It's being wrapped up right now. And once we receive that audit, we're going to further proceed to negotiate the police headquarters' contract, and then we can certainly use a line of credit for the gap in funding and start the groundbreaking soon thereafter. Want to let everyone know about the Light Up Holidays event that's happening in the next month or two. And yesterday concluded our turtle nest season. We had 72 violations, 69 violations complied and closed, and we appreciate businesses and property owners for complying and also our code enforcement staff for doing their effort in meeting the state requirements. We also will be working with the state and other stakeholders, such as hoteliers and the chambers, to determine what additional efforts we can do to improve lighting, improve the experience for hotel guests, and at the same time mitigate any issues with the turtles. And that concludes my report.
All right, great. Thank you. Anyone have any questions at the City Manager? There being none. Mr. Wallo, do you have any report to make?
I do not.
Okay. There being no further business of this conference meeting, this meeting is adjourned.
We have CRA.
What's that?
CRA.
No, I just want to take a... Just give me a second. I had to stretch. Okay. We're now to commence the Community Redevelopment Agency Board Meeting. Mr. Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Moritas is not present. Commissioner Glassman?
Here.
Commissioner McKenzie?
Here.
Vice Chair Sorenson?
Yes, here.
Chair Trentalis?
Here, thank you. We have a little too much activity here on the dais. Hold on. Where are you going?
The mayor tell you. I told the mayor. I took the mayor back out. I'm only doing this for you. If this is Trentalis, I make the walk.
CRA, right? Okay, so let us begin the meeting. You've called a roll, correct? Oops. So N1, a motion approving the minutes for September 22, 2022, Community Redevelopment Agency Board Meeting. Do I hear a motion to approve?
Moved.
Second.
It moved to the second. Please call the roll.
Vice Chair Sorenson?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner McKenzie?
Yes.
Chair Trentalis?
Yes, and those minutes are now approved. R1, resolution adopting a modified version of the Northwest Progressive Flagler Heights Community Redevelopment Agency Residential Facade and Landscaping Program for the central city area and approving a budget of $150,000. I have one person, Troy. Are you here?
Yes, sir.
Hi. Troy Liggett has asked to speak. Someone like to introduce the resolution?
Introduced.
Thank you, Mr. Liggett. How are you? Right ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Commissioners, I wanted to speak in support of this program, but I had a couple of questions, and I want to make sure that you understood a couple of provisions, and maybe they could clarify it. First, this program provides up to $5,000 grants for folks to rehab their facade with landscaping or paint.
This is commercial or residential?
It is for residential.
Right.
It is for residential homeowners primarily and investors secondary. $150,000 will fund about 30 of those in this big area. There was a map provided with it that shows the CCA district, but there's one fine detail, if you read the fine print of it, these grants aren't going to be provided for the entire district. I come as the president of Middle River Terrace Neighborhood Association. There's one clause in there that notes that the grants will only be provided for areas where they aren't rezoning. And if you're familiar with the big rezoning project that's underway there now, they're proposing new zoning in the entirety of the Middle River Terrace part of that area and around part of South Middle River. So these grants are only going to go to a small area between 13th and 16th Street in South Middle River. I guess that's maybe an issue of resources. I asked questions. I just learned about this program, and it seems to me that the folks in Middle River Terrace, my neighborhood, should be able to get the grants just as much as the need anywhere else.
Is Clarence still here? Clarence, do you want to clarify that?
Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of the commission, of the board. So as we discussed this program with members of the advisory board, one of the things we wanted to do was just target certain areas that were especially problematic with respect to how they look, and we didn't want to go into the areas that were going to be rezoned, because if they were upzoned, then the money we put into them, then, I mean, it would be lost. But what I want to say to Troy is, just like the program in the Northwest, we're targeting certain areas, but in the, in years to come, you know, we'll target other areas. It's just that we only have $150,000 right now, and we're focused on one particular area, but it will move throughout the whole central city area. We focus most of the money so you could see, I mean, a significant impact with the little bit of money that we have so that it doesn't, you know, be spread out, and you can't really see any appreciable difference in where we put the money. So it's not that it won't get over into the other areas. We're just focused and targeted on areas that's like most needed at this point.
Okay.
So I like this. I want to understand what Troy said, which is it's only for 13th and 16th?
It's not that it's only...
It's South Middle River. Let me finish. Is that true? Yes or no?
That's the main area that we're targeting.
Yes or no? This money? I'm with it. Yes or no? Is it just for what he said?
So, again...
I know how it's going to move in the future. I understand that. It's not a trick question. I'm cool.
We do have, we do have within the document that we have the ability to be able to go into different areas.
He said one thing. I support what he's doing, but it says 2 and 3 commission districts. So if it's just there, then the 3 needs to be removed.
Yeah, it shouldn't be in...
Okay, that's all I'm saying. I'm with it, whether it says 2, 3, 4, or 19.
Yeah, it shouldn't be in 3.
I like the idea. I want you to clean up the misperception that someone might have that they can go in this part of money and get it.
No, no.
Okay, thank you. Troy, good deal.
Clarence, do you think that there will be an expansion to cover more area, like what Troy just mentioned in Middle River Terrace?
Yes, we anticipate, again, once we, you know, make an impact in the area that's most needed right now, we will go into other areas.
Okay, good. Thank you.
So do we need any further action from...
We'll wait till Mr. Liggett finishes.
He's not finished?
I have a couple more things I wanted to raise.
And you have time. Go ahead.
You're good.
Yeah, okay.
I'm going to get it. I mean, you're good.
I understand kind of that there's only so much more money. It's my understanding that rezoning the areas that need the most help. And the part of Middle River Terrace, South Middle River Terrace could really use this money too, and I look forward, if that's the plan for future years, then we'll wait, but...
It's your money, $150,000.
I would prefer if it was available to everyone.
Do you want to give me half of it? I'll take it.
There you go.
No, it's yours.
I think Clarence cleared it up, saying that in the future it moves. We had this problem once before when we did something similar to this. Everyone wanted it, so it's going to move around, and it is just for you right now. Do what you need to do. Don't worry about how it looks.
Okay. Well, if someday it could come to our neighborhood too, that would be great.
Oh, it's yours.
What he's saying is it's not ours, that this money is...
It's South Middle River.
I'm Middle River, and it's going to South Middle River.
Clarence, you want to come help us out?
So it's not like this is going to be the end of the program. You know, this is, when we did it in the Northwest, we piloted the program until we kind of got the kinks out, and we understood what works best. We've gone through that, so now what we're doing is we're going to kind of use the same methodology that we used. Initially, in Northwest, it was Sweden Estate. Then we went over to Dorsey River Bend. Then we went to Doors. Then we went to Home Beautiful. So we did, we moved around. We're not neglecting anybody. It's for the whole CRA area.
And then everybody else, like you're saying, Troy, got mad. So now we're going to move it to a different district and use the money up, and then it's probably going to go to Fournecks, and then keep going. Each time, we get more money to cover everybody who wants to sip from this cup. So you will get it. It's over there now in the district, but all the neighbors didn't get it in my district, but we got it, and now we're moving it.
Okay. Thank you.
No, Troy, I was just going to ask you if you had your question answered about the tree situation that you brought up at the pre-agenda meeting.
Yes.
That's been answered?
It has been answered. Thank you.
Okay, fine. Thank you.
A couple small things, just looking at the program. It would seem to me that in the parts of where it's going to be targeted now, there are some really nice houses being developed. There are a million-dollar houses being built. And it would seem to me that this program would be best targeted to low-income, long-term residents. There's only so much more money to go around, and I'm not quite sure why there weren't income requirements of some sort for this. If you drive through those neighborhoods, the houses on the market are around $500,000 to over a million, the ones that are being redeveloped, and it seems like my neighbors who have income needs, we best support it. I hope that when they review the programs, they take that into consideration.
So is this not income qualifying, Clarence? I mean, could I, if I lived in Middle River Terrace, I could go apply for $5,000?
If your home said it, you can, but you're a commissioner, so you can't, or mayor.
No, mayor. Mayor, he just said it's only South Middle River. You couldn't own it.
Right, but I'm just saying, I'm just saying that...
So when it gets to your neighborhood...
The average homeowner, whether or not their income qualified, can ask for $5,000? That makes no sense to me whatsoever.
It does, Mayor. Listen to what he's going to say.
Okay.
So it's not income qualifications. I mean, it's not income qualifying. It's need. It's need, and it's based on...
So if someone's earning $200,000 a year, living in South Middle River in an $800,000 townhouse, and they're just not willing to spend the money to paint their house, we're going to give them a check for $5,000?
No, because it's going to be vetted.
Vetted by, and what are the criteria?
By the members of the board.
By what criteria?
Need. The criteria is when we go to the house, if that house is...
A mess.
A mess, and...
They're just rich, but they're sloppy.
Yeah, but that, so whether or not they are able to substantiate the need once we talk to them, and these guys, they talk, they know their neighbors. If they suggest that this particular property shouldn't be a part of the program, then that's basically how they'll kind of screen them out. But to go through a underwriting process, you know, that's going to be really involved, because, you know, what's going to be the established criteria other than what we see, you know, as far as the aesthetics of the house? Remember, this is supposed to be to increase the quality of life of the whole neighborhood, to bring the values up, and that was the whole idea behind it. We didn't screen for income and things like that, but if that's the desire or...
No, 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 no. Stop. I don't think we need to go there, but we all have our input. When we started, it started in the richest part of my district, newer, more improved district, where there were some houses left behind, so the community said, let's look at the broken window syndrome. So let's fix all of the windows. Let's do one neighborhood at a time, and you'll pick those homes that Troy is talking about. They'll get picked, and not the Dean Trentalis's homes of the world that already had a rehab. Or my house, which they painted my neighbors, and I was going through something too, but I couldn't dip into that part because my need wasn't where the others were in the threshold and the part of money having run out by the time it gets there. So it worked that way for us. I don't think criteria needs to come into play. I think need, because there's some houses on your street, no matter what you do, you can't get the move. I don't think criteria needs to come into play. I think need, because there's some houses on your street, no matter what you do, you can't get to the move. But we got people to move. In this instance, the whole street started looking like a, a real block.
And I don't want you to think that there isn't any criteria, because the areas that we talked about, from my understanding, there's a large, a significant population of investors. And while we will make it available to investors, but the program, the primary target of the program are-
Homesteads.
Homesteaded and folks who live and it's their homestead. But if you got a block full of, you know, properties that do have investors and it's an awful looking block. And, and again, this came from the board members. They want to be able to address that because they believe that it would pull the value of the whole neighborhood up if we put paint and landscape.
We never did any of those and I, I didn't want it, but I wasn't part of the process at all.
We didn't.
Neighborhoods were. And I think we can send code after those folks that don't want to do it if they're investing. But I still think the district commissioner knows what they want and how they want it to, you know, to-
And, and this was vetted through several meetings.
Right.
You know, about whether or not we would allow for investors to take part in it. And the consensus was that investors should, but at a much lower amount than what we're giving to homestead properties.
I don't, I discourage it going to-
Which would incentivize them to make-
It's not my district, so. But it's a good program. I can't wait for it to get back to my district and finish those neighborhoods that are mad at me. They're mad.
You want to continue, Troy?
If, if I may.
Yes, you may.
Sorry for, keep going on this. Back to that. As you could see from the application on this part of the packet, there's not a whole lot of stuff there. And, and the basic guidelines of this, I guess we'll trust Clarence and the organization to make these decisions that it's not going to investors who are. But if you look at that application, it doesn't ask for this information about assets and who's getting it. I guess it'll just be an ad hoc system that we'll have to trust. I guess we'll just keep an eye on it. The last thing I want to mention is that one thing that they say that, that Airbnb's could qualify for this. That there is no restriction for them. And I know in, in Middle River Terrace specifically, I, I don't know that we want money going to Airbnb's, but it sounds like this process is going to get to know who they're giving the money to. And that seems like some thing that should be excluded, so.
They do a good job.
Those are my three points. I appreciate you listening.
We didn't say Airbnb's would qualify for this. I don't know. That's a question he asked. I don't know if he got the answer that he was looking for, but that, we didn't. Airbnb's would be, I, I would imagine like investment properties, but we did not say Airbnb's would be eligible under this program.
Why don't you bring back, I won't be here, some examples of what you did in the past and how many of those homes were homesteaded? I don't remember any.
And, and as you kind of stated, most of the homes in the Northwest are homesteaded. So it's, it's kind of a total different area than what we have in Central City in the area that we're targeting. I think they said, what, see, maybe like 60 something, 68% of the homes in that area are actually investment properties. So, and, and what we are looking to, to, to provide funding for are the homesteaded properties. It's not that the investment properties can't apply, but priority will be given to the homesteaded properties. And it says that in the application. They just didn't want to not allow for investment properties to be able to apply if it was a really bad, you know, property.
Okay, thank you. And your other questions?
No.
Good.
The resolution's been introduced. Please call the roll.
A resolution of the Board of Commissioners of Fort Lauderdale Community Redevelopment Agency adopting a residential facade and landscaping program for the Central City redevelopment area, approving a budget of $150,000 and providing for an effective date. Vice Chair Sorenson?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner McKenzie?
Yes.
Chair Trentalis?
No. Our two, resolution approving a development incentive program loan in the amount of $1,500,000 to Related Fat Village LLC for the Galleria at Fat Village Project located at 600 Andrews Avenue. That would be North Andrews Avenue. Authorizing the executive director to execute any and all related instruments and delegating authority to the executive director to take certain actions. So before we begin, I just, we need to put this in some context. And maybe, and Mr. Stone, where are you? Oh, there you are. Maybe you can come up to the podium and help us out here a little bit. So Mr. Stone is here on behalf of the county. So we have a situation here where the county has, to their credit, pledged a lot of money for affordable housing and we appreciate that. And at some point, I guess, we'll know where that money is going and which cities are benefiting from it. I'd like, actually, I'd like to see what other cities are doing affordable housing. So we have some idea as to the allocation of the money and seeing, you know, how it's being distributed. But the thing is that this project in the northeast corner of Sistrunk and Andrews has been sitting for a while. And as a result, the cost of the project has gone up significantly. And now the city of Fort Lauderdale, to its credit, has done a remarkable job at providing quite a few affordable housing projects in, within the city's boundaries. And we are eager to partner with the county on future projects going forward. But the problem here is that this project could have been started a couple of years ago. I don't know why it took so long for them to move forward on this project, especially since we had built a couple of projects right in that area in the meantime. But the city is now being asked to split the cost of the cost overrun. The total cost overrun is $5 million. And the city's being asked, if you look at all the different aspects of where the funds are coming from, it's gonna come to about two and a half million dollars also. So I am happy you're here, Mr. Stone, because I want to know, why is it that the city is being asked to participate in a project of the county? Especially since the county has already committed a significant amount of funds towards affordable housing and can well afford the full amount of the over, cost overruns. So tell us a little bit about why you're here and why you think it's important for the city of Fort Lauderdale to be paying for half of this project right here up the street. All right? Thank you.
Sure, mayor. And, and thanks for the opportunity. There's, there's a couple of pieces of information I would share with you. And you're right, this, this goes back five years is when we started the project. And I will tell you that I, nor Bertha, nor Monica, are any happy, less happy than, than you are that it's taken this long. But there have been some bumps in the road, significant bumps in the road, that created a refinancing options for the program. Because what we wanted to make happen was to use the land value as a subsidy, so we didn't have to put any real dollars in the deal. And we wanted it to reach 120% because the moderate income workers really don't have a source of income like home and block grant and the state tax dollars. So that's how it got launched. They ran into some site plan issues. Then they ran into a sewer pipe that was right down through the middle. Those two things took a couple of years to work out, going back to working through that with HTG just to the north of them on the sewer issue. Then we hit the pandemic. But what I'll, I'll lead you to is about six months ago, this project was fully funded. As were about 70 other projects in the state of Florida that were fully funded affordable housing projects. And the construction run-up made them all not viable. And at the state level, they were overrun by all of these developers saying, you're about to lose thousands and thousands of dollars worth of funding and units and equity. This project happens to kind of fall in, in that ballpark. So what happened in Broward is the state created a program called the CHIRP program. It's an acronym for housing inflation costs. And they actually allocated about $5 million for each one of those 70 projects that applied. Six of them were in Broward. Of those six, even with the extra $5 million, four of them were still not viable. Related is the fifth one and the reason they weren't eligible is because they didn't have state money in the deal. The only reason I'm mentioning this is that those four projects represented about 500 units. And about probably a good hundred million dollars in equity that we would have lost as a county had we just said to the state, no, we're not stepping up to the table. So about three or four weeks ago, the county actually provided additional gap financing to all four of those deals. Two in Hollywood, one in Pembroke Pines, and one in Dania for a total of about $11 million. They were identical to Related in that they were fully funded about six months ago as was Related. So they came to us at the same time as Related did and Related basically said, they didn't need $5 million, they needed $7.5 million. And we vetted that project with our financial advisor that services the Housing Finance Authority. And we basically agreed to take on five of the seven and a half. The other four projects that we had provided the 11 million they got for, we asked all four of those cities to come to the table also. And they did. That's what led to us approaching the city to come to the table in regard to Related for the two and a half. So we had two and a half out of the Affordable Housing Trust Fund and another two and a half out of restructuring the deal that effectively created another $5 million in value to Related. And then we came to the city for the extra two and a half. So that's, that's how that unfolded. I would mention that in, in the course of them having to restructure their financing approach, and, and this is of value to me and I, I think should be to the city, is that they now are using bonds from the Housing Finance Authority that allow them to get down to lower income levels rather than, than just elect to get the most rent they can at 120. So we now have $62 million in HFA bonds in the deal. And the value of the property now is probably up from $4 million to $15 million. So we've got almost $100 million in this deal. They've elevated the total number of units up to, I think, 270, but it's still 150 affordable units. So from my perspective, it's still a great deal. I think it's gonna be a model for total mixed income. And, and the only other perspective I would add, mayor, is that this 150 units will toll toward the 15% affordable units set aside for the downtown rack. Those 5,000 units that the board created and, and the city has taken enormous opportunity to, to build, you know, dozens and dozens of market rate units.
But we've already, I think we've already achieved that threshold.
No, no, you haven't.
Well, our, our consultant said we're over 22% in the downtown rack and we achieved that already. So if you have the numbers, that would be important for us to see.
The, the way the, and I don't mean to correct you, mayor, the way the program works is the first 2,500 have to have 375 affordable units before you can access the second 2,500.
Okay.
And right now, you're about 165 short on the first half. Related would put you within a handful of being right there. And we've had this conversation back when Chris was here and with Anthony and Jenny at the DDA. So we've, we've all been at the table. That's what led to the modification of the condition that created more flexibility to the city that didn't impose this geographic noose on you where you had to be in the rack. We now collectively agree you can go outside of the rack and take advantage of some of those projects because we know that they're gonna work downtown. The only other thing I'd mention to you is that in the last six months, the board has allocated $50 million for 1,500 projects. Four of those projects are in Fort Lauderdale. Three of them, two of them were, were $2 million gap. One was a $2.5 million gap. Related for $5 million. And then a fifth project, if you count Related, was for about $800,000. So we haven't ignored Fort Lauderdale at all. It just so happens that on a competitive basis, good deals are being brought forward. And those are in the pipeline. We're working with those developers. We meet with them regularly to find out when they're gonna get to construction, financing, closing. So collectively, I think all of this is, is a pretty good package for the board, for the city. And I think Related is a good deal. And I think your, your investment here would be a good. Last point I would make is when we look at these gap deals, our kind of rule of thumb is $50,000 a unit subsidy. So in 100 units, we would give them $5 million bucks. For your 2.5, if you divide that by 150, you're down at $16,000, a little over $16,000 a unit for gap financing.
Yeah, but, but let's, let's not kid ourselves. There are only 45 units that are, there are 45 units that are market rate here. So of the 150 units that are being built here, a third of this building is not affordable. It's, it's market. And then 39 units are 50% area median income. Okay? That's low income. And that's something we are, we, we may be short on.
That's what, I didn't hear that.
Hold on, let me finish.
No, I'm saying, well, I didn't hear what you said.
And then, and then 100, and then 111 units are at 120% AMI. That's a lot, that's a big income. AMI is big in Fort Lauderdale. And 120% means that, you know, you can earn over $100,000 and qualify to live here. So my concern is here we're putting, being asked to put in $2.5 million that we usually apply towards people who are lower income. Not 45 units of market rate and then another 100 plus units for 120% of AMI. This is not truly an affordable housing project, is what I'm getting at. And yet, we're being asked to scrape from all of our resources, our Affordable Housing Trust Fund, our general fund and, and CRA money, which is intended for redevelopment, to really subsidize a market rate building that's one-third market rate and two, and another half that is pretty much for an, an average middle-class family. So I'm not sure this is the best project for this kind of money. Tell us what you think.
It's 272 total units and 150 of them are affordable. I will slightly disagree with you that, that people at 120% of median income in, in our county, there's not enough of, of available and affordable units at that, that income level to support the population. And, you know, Dr. Murray just updated his needs analysis. And if you go back in the back of it and you look at each one of the cities, you know, Fort Lauderdale, just separated by a couple hundred units from Hollywood, are the two top in terms of need, about 16,000 units short. And there's a good couple of thousand units in the 120% income category that are needed to support the, the population here. So I, I think it is a good deal. I, I think the, the cost is very reasonable. I think the ability to get 75 years out of this money instead of the usual 30, or if you're using tax credit dollars at the state 50, is extraordinary. And again, if, if you do the math on, on the subsidy cost per unit and it comes out at 16,000, we fund 15,000 every day of the week and we've gone up to 100. You're, you're right in that, that we're getting up to a moderate income worker on 95 of these units and then 55 or 50% or less. But that doesn't bother me because I know that there's an enormous need there. I'll, I'll share with you a personal story real quick. I've got seven positions vacant in my staff. Four of them are senior professionals that were earning in the 90s. They not only left Broward, they left the state because they couldn't afford to live here. So I know that, that, that people at 120 need assistance too. They are considered affordable. And there's, there's really no source of income to help them like there is with block grant and ship and the tax credit stuff.
Sorry, give me the total number of uni, are you saying, did he say 272? I hear you say?
272 is the total number of units.
Okay, because our, our backup says 195.
It's 195.
This building isn't gonna have 272 units.
It's 195 units.
It's 195.
195.
Yeah, it's a 12-story tower, 195 units, 200, sorry, 39 at 50% AMI, 111 at 120% AMI and 45 at market rate. It does have 200 and- It does have 226 parking spaces.
Yeah, and I apologize. That was the site plan proposal from about a month ago. Since then, it has been modified, and the total number of units now are 272, market rate 122.
Okay, hold on, Ralph, hold on. So it is 272 units now?
Yeah, market rate 122.
Okay, market rates, how many?
122.
122.
Moderate, 95, which is the 120, and 50%, 55.
Okay, so Alan, so 120 units are, sorry, 95 units are 120%, right, AMI?
95 units are 120, that's correct.
Yep, and then, what's the third number?
The 50% AMI is 55 units.
55 units.
And how many units are market rate?
122.
122.
122? So half this building is market rate, and we're subsidizing it?
Anthony has some updates he wants to share.
And Mayor, just as a note, the original project that was submitted obviously had the 195 units. That's what the advisory board looked at, that's what was submitted to the CRA. So if the project's changed, then that's to be considered as well.
Does it have to go back through the process, Alan?
I mean, that's a decision on your part, but I mean, if it's a significantly different project where now we have significantly more units and the dynamics are changing, I mean, it's not the project that was submitted to the CRA.
Okay. I don't know, just seeing, Mr. Stone, we're subsidizing a 50% market rate building. When did that ever happen?
What's that?
We're subsidizing a 50% market rate building. When did that, when did we ever do something like that? Even at the beginning of the CRA, we never did anything like that.
That doesn't mean that it's not a good idea. Part of the problem that we have and that we need to get to, not only in this county but in this country, is where we're segregating wealth in these market rate deals, and then we're segregating low income in the tax credit deals. We know nowadays that if you look at the quality of the development and you look at the build-out of development, and by the way, we know that most of the people that are occupying these tax credit deals are our workforce. 54% of every employee in Broward County is earning 60% of area median income or less.
But we have buildings right across the street that are not 50% market rate that are doing quite fine. The finishes are fine, they're keeping it upright, and they're wonderful additions to the community. We did not subsidize a 50% market rate building in any of our communities. So if I'm not mistaken, Mr. Lockery's here, I don't want to put him on the spot. He did represent those other buildings, but I think I can attest to the fact, since I've been sitting here for a little while, that we did not ever subsidize a building that was 50% market rate. And now you're asking us to do that as an incentive to the Related group, which I appreciate their willingness to do affordable housing, but on our time. And I just don't think that the community should bear that burden. Mr. Lockery, could you correct me if I'm wrong? Any of those buildings, there are three buildings that are next to this site, and I believe you represented two of them.
Yeah, I can speak.
Progresso Point.
Yep.
What's the one on the corner?
Wisdom Village.
Wisdom Village.
And then HTG.
Right.
I can speak specifically from memory, close anyway, for Wisdom Village and Progresso Point. We handled HTG, but I don't recall the numbers. But an important distinction with those is, while it's true that they did not have a market rate component, each one of those was only about 100 affordable units. This project comes to the door, comes to you already at 150 units. So it is already 50% larger in terms of affordable housing than those projects were independently. I also want to point out, because I think it's important to just look at the numbers, and these are based on the county's website, 2022 income limits, hopefully they're pretty close. But when we talk about 120% moderate income, that for a family of two, for only a two-person household, that's a maximum income of $87,000. And that's potentially two workers earning 87,000. So one thing we do know from those other two examples, Mayor, is that they're full. And there's people trying to get into those units because we have such a lack of that type of product in Fort Lauderdale. And that's why I think bringing this to you.
I'm okay with the 120%. I just can't believe that we're going to subsidize a market rate building.
Well, the building, I think it's tough to say it's a market rate building when.
Don't, it's not tough, it's right here, black and white.
Well, generally, a market rate building, we talk about certain market rate buildings and some new requirements that are going to be coming into the city that require roughly about 15% affordable. To have a product that has this percentage of affordable units, we believe is an important step forward. We do need, the market rate units was originally intended to be a positive for the building, so you would have a very mixed-income community. And one of the things that happens is it's been a very long road. You'll remember, I know you remember, this whole idea was hatched over lunch one day in a restaurant in La Solis that's not even in business anymore. So that tells you how long it's been. But, you know, we're at that point where with this contribution from the city, with a couple other tweaks and other things that may have to be done, we can bring this product in and bring it to the finish line. And right now, we're asking for the city for that help. One other element that Ralph didn't mention, but I know the guys in Related can mention as well, they've also contributed to this shortfall by deferring the developer fee, by putting their own equity into the deal. So I think all parties to the deal, including the city, are really doing its part with this deal.
Okay, thank you.
I mean, another way I'm looking at this is we've got 145 units are affordable workforce housing. Is that?
150.
150. I got 95 plus 50, is it 55, sorry? So 150 units are workforce or affordable housing. Is that, am I saying that right, Ralph?
Wait, 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 the numbers aren't adding up here.
Yeah.
What's the total number of units in this building that you're projecting?
The total.
Total, 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 like total.
272.
272. And what was it originally, 195?
Originally, it was 195.
This is a completely different building. But go ahead, 272.
272.
Either way, the important.
Hold on, hold on, let me just.
Important statistic for the affordable units is they didn't change. It's 150 in the first deal, it's 150 in the second modified deal. And the subsidy is not subsidizing the first market rate unit. Whether, stick with, they stick with the first, 195 and 150, or the larger deal, the subsidy both from the county and the city is supporting that 150 affordable units, not any of the market.
So what's the, yeah, so what's the total Fort Lauderdale city subsidy to this project? What would it be if this was approved today?
Two and a half million.
2.5 is the request.
Okay, 2.5 million total. Now, that would be the subsidy for total 272 units, but especially, you know, that would be going to the 150 affordable housing units that are in there.
That would be the total for either total number because in both deals, it's 150 affordable units.
It's 150 affordable. To, I mean, if I just look at, Mayor, exclude the market rate, I mean, the 2.5 investment in 150 affordable units is, to me, seems to make sense. I mean, that's a good investment for what we need. Is that a fair way to look at that, you think, Mayor? Just exclude the market rate and say what we're getting for the 2.5?
Well, again, it goes back to my original discussion about, you know, you know, the city has really invested a lot of its money in trying to create an affordable housing component in its central city area. And I appreciate the county now working with us in trying to bring more affordable housing units in our downtown. But it seems to me like we're somehow being penalized for something we never did. We didn't delay the project. We didn't, I mean, there were projects that were built that were applied for after they started their process and were completed already. And I speak specifically to the building right next door, right to the north of it. I feel somehow that, you know, the city is being asked to do something that I don't think is fair to the city. And I think that it smacks a little squirrely that we are being asked to subsidize a building with almost half-market rate housing. And, you know, getting back, Mr. Stone, to your statement that, you know, it's supposed to be 15% affordable housing in a market rate building, let's not turn that argument upside down. The reason why we require a 15% obviously is to bring affordable housing into the neighborhood and into the building. But that isn't being used as an incentive. That's, the incentive is to allow investors to come into our community and make a profit on the other 85%. This is a requirement that we have, like a lot of other requirements we have, in order to build in the city. We, as a city, do not, and with the county, we don't feel that's an undue burden considering that the market will bear that kind of impact on the cost of putting a building together like that. But the reality is, we are now being asked to, and by the way, on those types of projects, there's zero subsidy. The 15% is part of a total building, there's zero city participation. Now you're asking us to give two and a half million plus your two and a half million, a $5 million subsidy, plus waiving some of your fees in order to produce a market rate building. That's the problem I have.
Right, so the 5,000 units that created the incentive to invest in downtown and build all this market rate stuff really worked. And the reason it worked is because each one of those units that was just created out of thin air, all 5,000 of them, have a value of about 50,000 a unit. So about 250 million bucks of land value happened overnight. And the landowners, developers, and the city and county benefited from it in terms of taxable value. If you capitalize the cost per unit, those 5,000 units are worth about a billion, 500 million, or over $7 million a year just in taxes to the county. So what was intended to happen was in effect that windfall would create a subsidy for affordable development downtown. It really hasn't happened. The units that have told toward the 15%, for the most part, have all been tax credit deals.
Yeah, but, but Mr. Stone, that so-called windfall is really a windfall for the county because that extra tax money, we have to pay for more police, we have to pay for better sewers, we have to pay for more firefighters. You don't have to pay for none of that. You get away scot-free. And so when you come to us and say, oh, well, that windfall, you now need to help subsidize affordable housing projects, you're asking us to not only pay for all those increased costs and services, now you're asking us to pay for, to subsidize these projects when you get away without having to do any of that. So why are we being asked to shoulder a burden that maybe you should ante up a little bit more than us?
Well, I would say a piece of land that's now worth 15 million, and 62 million in bond allocation, by the way, if we don't use it this calendar year, we lose it. And I would beg to differ that the county bears no service costs. We just have different kinds of services that we have to absorb.
Give me an example.
Ports, airports.
Well, I can tell you right now that Flagler Village benefits zero from the port, okay? Unless they're talking about importing gasoline into the gas stations, into the city, maybe that's it. But really, we appreciate the services that the county provides, the port, the airport, and the other services that you provide. But the reality is, the city is shouldering a tremendous burden by increased population. Our sewer infrastructure, our water infrastructure, our stormwater infrastructure, our fire and police departments, none of those are assisted by the county in trying to provide those services to the increase in population. So for you to come here, I get it. You know, you're trying to get money out of us so that you don't have to pay it. But the reality is, maybe you should be helping out a little bit more. Since you have more money, you're benefiting more through the tax increase. You keep talking about the increase in values. Yes, but you're getting more of it because the net to you is far greater than the net to us. So that's why I'm concerned. And now that you're asking us to subsidize a building that's half-market rate, it raises some red flags in the whole process.
Well, the only thing we're asking for you to assist subsidizing is 150 affordable units. That's it. Not the first market rate unit, not the first door lob, not the first piece of timber. It's 150 affordable units. And if the city is not interested in them, you know, I'm not going to try and talk you into anything. All I can tell you is, in this country, our metro area is dead last in terms of affordability. In the state, Broward County is dead last in terms of available units. To half of the workers in this county, dead last, 25 units for every 100 workers. And, you know, the city's next to dead last in terms of need. So you either want to participate in providing, you know, this affordable opportunity, or don't. And, you know, you have to make your own judgments about that.
We have, you know how many affordable housing units we have within five blocks of where you're standing? Hundreds. So don't say that we're not participating in the program. Don't make us look like we're the bad guys here.
I didn't say that. I said that the city is next to dead last in need. The county is dead last in the state, and the metro area is dead last in the country. That's just a fact. Those are three facts.
Yeah, I mean, I think we need more affordable housing. I think the investment of $16,667 a unit for each of the affordable housing units, each of the 150, if we could do that day in and day out, I think it addresses, better addresses our the cost burdens that we have here. We're the most cost-burdened area in the country for affordable housing. So I just, I think it makes sense. I think we've got a partner in this. And I think we need to keep moving forward with affordable housing. I don't think we have enough in the city.
Okay, anyone else have any comments?
Mayor, I do understand your concerns, but at this point, and with these delays and the number of units that would come online, and the project being about 67, I think, million dollars, I just think that we have to move forward. I understand everything you're saying, and I certainly think the county could be doing a little bit more, but I also agree with the math that the vice manager stated. And again, because of the delays and the delays and the delays on this, I just think we need to go forward with this.
Okay.
I'm going to make a comment, you didn't ask me, but I'm going to make one.
I was getting to you.
I've been sitting here for a while. And the last real affordable units I saw happen here was the two that Mr. Lockery mentioned, Atsis Trunk and Andrews. And then the one that just came on board with A&amp;C, I believe it was. Those are three that I witnessed, touched, and felt. 613, we gave an enormous amount of money to, and I didn't see this type of wrangling with. A month and a half ago at a meeting, I saw us speak to a 100% low-income project we turned down because of the process. Now, a month and a half later, here's another opportunity to do something, something. Nothing I would ever agree with on my own island, Ralph, nothing, because I would want 100% based on the needs. But we keep saying, no, and then the window of opportunity to me just goes away. And it's a good argument, perceptionally, it's a good argument to say no, but even in the last deal, I want someone to correct me. The one that Alan said that is a totally different deal. What was our commitment then in terms of dollars? No pun intended for you, just facts. How much did we put on the table then? Can someone ask that question? Wasn't it five million?
For which project?
Was it, is it the same project, same place? This is not the same, which one is this one?
Andrews, it's the empty lot, it's the empty lot.
Right. So now we have an opportunity next to the other one that was 100%, right? And across the street from two others, right? Right?
Across the street from where?
Where the carpet store was, right?
Where the carpet store.
Yeah, okay, I'm not crazy. So you may not remember the carpet store, because it wasn't Flagler Village as you know it now. It was the carpet store and a few other bad things. But here we are at the threshold to do something. We're still going to fund or either represent the same amount of units, am I correct? Just for the developer to get his project financially feasible, he had to increase the other units or more units to make it economical. But yet, he's going to bear the burden of the. But yet, he's gonna bear the burden of the same units you came to us the last time with in the other deal, am I correct? I just want to make sure I'm doing the right, that's it.
It's, uh, 150 units, the first project's is still 150 affordable, the second, that's correct.
Okay. And the only place that I've seen, I'm gonna just say this, uh, where we, the city's put money in, I could be totally wrong, is within our CRA. And the county has put money in throughout this whole county anytime there's an opportunity that rears its head, am I correct?
My opinion, yes.
So when we use words like subsidy, isn't this supposed to be an incentive? An incentive to get people to the table, especially in the CRA? And I'm not knocking it, but it, 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 it troubles me, and it's not my first time speaking to this, because subsidy is like it's a handout. We have dollars that you're asking for and a pot of money that we use to incentivize people to invest in an area that they wouldn't ordinarily come into. The area has grown tremendously, and the tipping point has passed us at that intersection. But as a result of what we'll do here today, there'll be more that will tip over to the northwest and, um, complete this process we started many, many years ago in what we call redevelopment. So I agree, um, with my, with the vice mayor and my other colleague that we need to do something here. I, I do not want to take this opportunity and miss this window, um, to say that the county's not doing something, or this is not what we're looking for. This is something we could put on the books today. So I would like to move forward with this, um, because we're doing something.
Okay. Any further questions or comments, there being none? Now, the other people have signed up to speak, it was just for questions only, correct? Okay. All right, please call the roll. Are they, oh, someone introduced a resolution.
Introduced.
Introduced to support, correct?
Yes, to support.
A resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the Fort Lauderdale Community Redevelopment Agency approving a loan of $1,500,000 to Related Fat Village LLC under the Development Incentive Program for the Gallery of Fat Village Mixed-Use Affordable Housing Project located at 600 Andrews Avenue, authorizing the executive director to execute any and all documents related to this transaction, delegating authority to the executive director to take cer- certain actions and providing for an effective date. Vice Chair Sorenson?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner McKenzie?
Yes.
Chair Trentalos?
No, and the resolution's approved, onto R3. So a resolution approving an increase in property and business improvement program funding to Crave Madness LLC in the amount of $347,219.89 for the Jamaican Jerk Shack Restaurant at 560 Northwest 7th Avenue, and waiving the maximum funding limits of the program, authorizing the executive director to execute any and all related instruments, and delegating authority to the executive director to take certain actions. Clarence, do you want to talk about this?
And while Clarence comes up, just wanted to mention that it's District 2.
It's District 2, yeah. So, um, this has been, um, you know, we have been looking forward to this restaurant for a number of years. And, and unfortunately, these folks have still not have been able to give them the opportunity to, to do something here. And I appreciate your patience here, sitting through all this and all these years. Now, let me just ask, I just have one simple question, Clarence. Is, are these folks required to use the Milton Jones Company to do the build out of this space?
Initially, that was, uh, the case.
And that is not the case today?
It's not the case now, but when they did go out and try to procure their own contractor, uh, they weren't successful in doing so.
Well, I know what that's like. No one's around to do any work anymore, everyone's busy, I get that.
Right.
So, so they're ending, they're gonna use Mr. Jones?
Yes, they did get one other price, but it was not, uh, cheaper than Mr. Jones's. Not by much, but, um, it wasn't that, it wasn't cheaper.
Okay.
How long has this been going on? This project, it's just for the record.
Since 2019, I think.
When did it originally start though, 19 or before that?
19, I think it was.
Uh, 19.
19, three years?
19?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
But again, you were gone early, and they did a bunch of projects. I think we're gonna run into the same problem if we don't get a faster system that can keep up with the market of the cost of construction. Or we need to raise the thresholds, uh, to accommodate this and not have this type of, uh, 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 thing come back and haunt us. I won't be here, but this, this is gonna happen again and again and again.
Well, this is the thing, if, if these applicants are allowed to see competitive bids, then that's a completely different situation than we had the first time around.
Yes, yeah.
If they do choose Mr. Jones, that's at their choice, not, not a requirement, right?
That's the number.
Right, right. All right, so we have to let that go. We have to, we have to, okay, I mean, so-
Mayor, that the applicant does have over 80,000 in of their own money, and, um, I believe the landlord is contributing $30,000 also as well for restrooms and AC.
Uh, yes.
Yes, so there is that as well. Yeah, it, it is astronomical, the increase from 306 to, uh, 705.
All the construction costs have gone up.
I know, but from 306 to 705 is, uh, is big. That's a big increase, uh, for the project, but, um, I, I, again, I just think we have to move forward and, uh-
Are you introducing the resolution?
I am introducing the resolution.
Any further comments or questions? Nobody has signed up to speak?
I, I, I don't want to beat a dead horse, I'm leaving.
Go ahead, go ahead.
This is gonna happen on all of these projects. We need to go back and, 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 and look at this, and this is a small project, based on other things we've seen. So these little mom and pop deals, which are big because 75% of our marketplace is small businesses, we have to look at this number and really, really, um, you know, just look at the projects that are coming and say, they all need this, whatever this increase was, this is a little restaurant.
You're taking three bays, right, in this place?
And it's already built, building, so this is a build-out. So imagine the others and, and some of the things we're gonna have to do as our-
So Vanilla's, it's, it's, it's still concrete floors and everything, right?
No, it's dirt right now.
It's even worse, it's dirt. Okay, so you guys have your work cut out for you.
But I think that they're-
They're, they're ready to go, though. They're actually ready to go.
Speak into the microphone, speak into the microphone.
I'm sorry, I think it's a good thing, and I just wanted to add to the record.
Okay, all right.
But it's introduced.
Okay.
You know, it is introduced. And Mayor, I've been waiting three years and nine months for Raspberry Wings, so, uh, I want to get there already.
I think the committee changed, Raspberry's out.
Okay, please call the roll.
A resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the Fort Lauderdale Community Redevelopment Agency waiving the maximum funding amount under the Property and Business Investment Improvement Program for Crave Madness LLC, approving an increase in the amount of $347,219.89, approving the First Amendment to the Property and Business Investment Improvement Agreement, authorizing the exec- executive director to execute all related instruments, delegating authority to the executive director to take certain actions and providing for an effective date. Vice Chair Sorenson?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner McKenzie?
Yes.
Chair Trentalos?
Yes. Is there any further business at the CRA? There being none, this meeting is concluded, thank you.